Recording in progress.
Jennifer, are you ready to go? Okay, well, we're going to get started. I'd like to call this meeting of the City Monterey Planning Commission to order for our session Tuesday, February twenty eighth. Can we have our real call, please?
Definitely, Chair.
Yes.
New Commissioner Member Blue.
Here.
We got a little bit of feedback. And Committee, Chris or Brassfield.
President.
Chris or Dawson.
Here.
Chris or Freeman.
Here.
And Chris or Latessa.
Present.
That gives us a full commission today. And for staff, we have Community Development Director Cole. Later Principal Planner Rovary will be joining us and myself, Recording Secretary Clearing.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to welcome Bob to the Planning Commission. It's nice to have this seat filled and unfortunately we lost a Commissioner, Stephen Millet, who I'd like to acknowledge for his service on the Commission and is a very considerate Commissioner.
Here.
So do you need to make the announcement of how people call in at this point?
Yes, I would be happy to do that. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a ten second delay and Comcast Channel twenty five with up to a ninety second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Once again, that phone number to join is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. It is toll free and there are other options on the meeting agenda if that first number does not work. You'll need a webinar ID for this meeting. It is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, the webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comments via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
Okay, we are going to move to our consent agenda. Keep in mind, a member of the public or a Commissioner may request that the item recommended for approval and consent can be heard on a regular agenda for session. We only have our minutes from January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three, so I don't suspect anybody would be wanting to pull that. Anybody have a comment on our minutes?
I will be abstaining since I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the minutes for January twenty fourth, two oh two three.
Thank you, motion to.
Second.
And we have a second.
So before we move on, does any member of the public want to pull the minutes? I don't see any, Jennifer, any hands raised for the minutes.
There are no hands raised online, but just a reminder, you can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen if you're logged in through Zoom. And if you're joined by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Can we have a call for the vote on that?
Yes, Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Our blue.
I'll abstain.
Thank you. And Mr. Brassfield.
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latessa.
Yes.
Great, thank you. The motion is approved as amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to our public hearing. Item number three. Consider six hundred Hawthorne Street Use Permit UP twenty two zero two three six to allow a modified T-Mobile West LLC personal wireless service facility. The applicant is Andrea Kohatsu Rascop on behalf of T-Mobile. The owner is First Baptist Church of Monterey. And this is zoned R three five. And it's residential medium general plan land use designation and it's exempt from SEQA for Article nineteen, Section fifteen, three oh three, Class three. Have a staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, public. My name is Jerry Hiddleman. I'm a contract planner with the city for wireless projects. And as stated, this is a modification of a T-Mobile facility at six hundred Hawthorne Street. Next slide, please.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Yeah.
Kim, I just realized I went right over public comments.
There were no hands raised, but just one more time. To join the Zoom meetings from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. The phone number to join is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. The webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. There is a raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if you're joined by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute. And no hands are raising.
Just to clarify for the public, these, you're able to make comments on items that are not on our agenda. And Jennifer, will you check one more time to see if there's any hands raised?
No hands have been raised.
Is there anyone in the public in the chambers that would like to make a comment on items not on our agenda? Not seeing anyone come forward. We will start again with the public hearing for six hundred Hawthorne Street. Thank you for catching that, Chair Fletcher.
You should have caught it. Had it down. Okay, Jerry, we're ready for you.
Okay. Yeah, thank, thank you. I think we can skip to the next slide, Jennifer, please. The project is located at six hundred Hawthorne Street. I think Commissioners are familiar with the site, except for the new Commissioner. This is a church. It's they have a parking lot and as you can see, the project location will be in the church cupola or steeple. Showing where the arrow is. Next slide, please. So the project is to remove three existing panel antennas, three radios or remote radio units that support equipment. Some tower mounted amplifiers, diplexers and coax cables. And then they are going to replace what's removed with three new panel antennas, three new hybrid cables and six new radio units. And as you'll see, all of these improvements will be inside the cupola and won't be visible to the public. This proposal is considered to be an eligible facilities request under Section sixty four oh nine of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of two thousand twelve. And under this regulation, this is not considered to be a substantial change. And therefore, we're under a sixty day shot clock or sixty day time period in which the project shall be acted on. And this would end on April twelfth of this year, two thousand twenty three. Next slide, please. So this is a site plan showing the church structure and then focusing in on the cupola in the center where the improvements will be. So the antenna layouts, as you can see on the left, are existing. And then on the right, I've circled where the antennas will be replaced with inside that cupola structure. So again, they're removing three panel antennas and putting in new, renew panel antennas. And basically, that's to provide enhanced data and other services under five G. So the support equipment is underneath the antennas within the cupola structure itself again, and they'll be installing three new hybrid cables and six new radio units as described previously. Next slide, please. Here's the elevation drawings. It shows what's going on inside the cupola, but that won't be visible. That's all inside the existing structure. Tennis will be on the upper portion of the cupola and the support equipment below it. Next slide. Just another view of the cupola from the plans. Next slide, please. And again, this shows what the, that church and cupola structure looks like, but and no exterior improvements. So this is from Hawthorne Street, a view of what's existing out there today. What will be proposed? Next slide, please. And then this is from the other side of Lighthouse Avenue. And you can see a tiny bit of that couple sticking up over the church building from that location. But we had a radio frequency study conducted for this project. As for all wireless projects and the proposed antennas would be compliant with FCC rules. And no public safety limits are exceeded at ground level or at adjacent properties. Given the location of the antennas higher up in the cupola. So as you can see, the yellow, this is a elevation view of the radio frequency array coming out of the antennas, typical array. And the yellowish part, yellowish green, shows that there's no exceedance of the occupational FCC RF limit within fourteen feet of the antennas. And then the blue bubble shows that there'll be no exceedance of public RF limits within thirty two feet of the antennas. So the arrays that would be above FCC FCC limits will not go beyond the property lines. Next slide, please. And this is a site view of those arrays. Colors really show the public limit coming out just above the roof of the building. Next slide, please. So we do have some conditions to ensure radio frequency safety. As for all projects, we are requiring a post installation RF coverage report that would be done after the improvements are installed and before they're operational to make sure that it's exactly as shown on the two previous slides. That would be the RF array. We want to make sure that there's proper RF cautionary signage shall be posted at the cupola and support equipment areas that are accessed from inside the building and also on the exterior. And restricted and secured access to the cupola area is also required, which is currently the case inside the building. Next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution approving use permit UP twenty two oh two three six to allow modifications to an existing T-Mobile personal wireless facility at six hundred Hawthorne Street. And I'm available for questions. I believe the applicant is here with their RF engineer who can also answer, does need a.
Any questions, Commissioners for staff or Jerry?
Just a quick question. What is the building? What is the level of activity in building usage other than being a wireless communications transmitter?
And a church.
That is a church.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many congregants come on Sunday, but it's a church building. So but all the RF arrays are on the roof. They won't go down into the building or down at ground level.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So thanks, Jerry. So everything, it looks like a good report, the project, but the when I'm reading these technical reports, you know, it's always a challenge, but the staff report is of course very helpful and you helped clarify everything. The staff report describes it as a five G replacement. And your verbal just presentation describes it as five G, but we're in the report, you know, looking through all these documents, I can't see anything in there that says that. Is there, is there, can you point out where in the report that's actually stated? Yeah, I don't think that would be in the RF report. It's, I think that's not a technical term that is used by RF engineers. It's more of a commercial term, you know, going from four G to five G for these companies. It just means that they're increasing the capabilities for data and phone calls within the panel antennas and within the structure. But if there's a, going to be a difference between four G and five G in terms of RF, there is an RF engineer in attendance tonight can answer that question. Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mike.
Jerry, uh in our history of in cell towers in this city, the five G was a nasty phrase. And now we hear it going from five G to ten G. Is it all these commercial terms or is this an evolution?
Yeah, I'm not really up on ten G, but it could be coming like you're saying. That again, just means increased capabilities of the antennas to supply more data, more recordings, other, other things that you might be able to do on your phone in the future. So but for the next meeting, if we, and if we do get a ten G facility coming in, I come back with a more detailed explanation.
Well, I think it brings up Terry's point. We need to know what we're talking about here on this evolutionary process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, also, just continuing that line of question. It's, I think it's good for the public because the public has accessed all these documents and you know, there, you'd think at the beginning of the report, there would be a sort of a layman's description of the project that might help the public when they're looking at applications like this. Yeah, thank, thank you. We can definitely do that. We are focused on the safety element, of course, the RF report. That's, as you know, goes through a third party review. And it is, the project isn't compliance with FCC regulations, so.
And I'll focus, yeah.
Add to that, I'm, we're only seeing five G applications right now. So that's happened probably in the last six months, eight months. There's been, for a while, we saw a replacement of four G technology with four G technology and we're only seeing five G now.
Right, but still for the public, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, just to make a quick comment, the, the five G, four G, that's just a commercial term that the industry uses to describe the new technology. So the frequency spectrum that the five G is using is a little bit different than the four G in that it's using a lot of the VHF, UHF that was auctioned off when you went to digital on your TVs. And so there's a technological improvement and a little bit of a difference in some of the RF that comes out of the five G, but not substantially. And what the FCC is giving you is the intensity of the, the signal radiation coming from the antennas, which I'm assuming are just these plain phased array antennas which will propagate the signal out the same direction the antenna points. So we could always try to get a presentation on just the physics of it. But a lot of what's going on is just using a lot of the new spectrum that they got from the sale of the spectrum that was being used on the TV that you're now getting digital.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
So the applicant might, should be online, Jennifer. Maybe you could ask them to raise their hands.
It is raised. Using the wrong screen. Andrea, you should be able to unmute yourself.
All right. Hi, my name is Andrea Kohatsee Rascop. I'm with the CBR Group representing T-Mobile. I don't have a presentation today, but if there are any questions that I can help answer in regards to the design of the project, I am here and I would also like to thank Jerry for putting together his presentation and providing all of the very important details.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing that there are none, I think we can open up the public hearing portion of this item.
Okay, and one more time for the viewers. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Once again, that toll free phone number is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID, one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, the webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To provide public comment by Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon.
Anybody in the chambers here wishing to speak to this item? None? And do we have any hands raised?
There are no hands raised online.
That's surprising. Okay, seeing that there's no hands raised online and no one from the audience, I think we can bring this back to Commissioners for deliberation.
I would suggest this is a regular sixty four oh nine project that we've become accustomed to.
I love it how they put it in the coal plate and you can't see it. I think that's the best thing of this presentation is they could do that with the antennas that they want to put up where they're kind of hidden in the architecture or look like a tree or hidden in a tree.
It would be fantastic. Yes. So.
Any other comments?
Yeah, this is sort of a poster child for this kind of you know, secretive placement of these devices. It's, it's just a perfect sort of a thing, couple like that, that apparently for any of the reports has no you know, they're.
You know, there are no tall buildings around or any people to receive the, um. Any of their radiation coming off of them.
Yes, true. Any other comments? Some would like to make a motion.
Sure. I move to approve use permit UP twenty-two, zero, two, three, six. To allow modified T-Mobile West LLC Personal Wireless Service Facility. At six hundred Hawthorne Street, Monterey, California.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have a little call on the vote?
Trey Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Brathfield?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latasta?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion is carries and these wireless applications are appealable within three days. With forms found through the planning office.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number four.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Jerry, which is a rec, excuse me, recommend that the city council adopt the. Uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four annual action plan for community development block grant funds and authorize. Submittal to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is exempt from. NEPA. That's a new one for me. Uh, per twenty-four CFR part fifty-eight and from SEQA for article nine, section one, five, three, zero, one, class one. One, five, three, zero, six, class six, and one, five, three, two, six, class twenty-six. Can we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Fletcher's and, uh, Chair Fletcher and Commissioners. As the chair introduced this afternoon, you're considering our community development block grant. It's our annual action plan. It's basically the budget for our CDBG program and it's a recommendation to the city council. The city council will be taking final action, um, on the action plan. So why CDBG? Um, CDBG is our opportunity to partner. With social service agencies in our community. Um, for example, this is a photograph of community human services who operates Safe Place, which is a. Um, shelter for youth between the ages of, I believe, nineteen and twenty-five years old. And so they can have a place to stay overnight if they're currently unhoused. So it's an opportunity to partner. With our social service agencies. It's an opportunity to, um, also invest in existing. Affordable housing projects through rehabilitation programs. And we also have, um, some public infrastructure items that we can work on in this program. So first of all, just big picture, what happens? The city adopts a five-year plan. It's called a consolidated plan. Um, this is the last year of our five-year plan. Um, so we'll be working on its update. And it establishes, um, priorities. Um, and it has sort of an exhaustive analysis of needs in the community. And every five years we're required to update that. And then we, in between those, each year we have an action plan that we adopt. Um, as a city. And as I mentioned, um, there's four major project areas. There's the Public Service Grant Program. We have two aspects to that this year. It's a little bit different and that's exciting. We have infrastructure improvements. Housing preservation, which is typically rehabilitation or purchase and resale. And then we have, um, planning and administration. Um, so what are our funding sources within community development block grant? We have something called, um, our CDBG entitlement. Um, this year we're expecting two hundred and fifty thou- approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is the amount that. Is, is all that most communities receive is they typically receive, um, their entitlement. Monterey is unique and we have Damian Delaney on, um. Line who works for Michael Baker and is one of our advisors for CDBG compliance. We also have program income of about a million dollars a year. And we're very fortunate where the city has previously used its community development block grant money to invest in real estate. The most common, um, is through our purchase and resale program. The city has a number of housing units that were, um, originally purchased, um, through the CDBG program. When housing costs were a lot less and we have a low-income family living in that housing unit. Um, if that family choose to move out or most commonly what happens is. The person eventually, um, you know, passes away and they, and then that, um. Were able to purchase that unit, rehabilitate that unit, and then offer it to the next. Family in line for affordable housing. And so we, we sell about two to three units a year through our affordable housing program. And people are on our, our list. So that's showing about a million dollars worth of revenue to the city through this program. That's turned over to the next family. We also have a really exciting, um, part of our program. And it's the CARES Act funda- funding. It's CDBG, I think, slash CB funding. And the city, because we performed during the coronavirus. Situation and we expended all the extra money that the federal government gave us through the emergency rental assistance program. You might remember a few years ago, we revamped our whole program during COVID. And we provided emergency rental assistance to people that lived or worked in Monterey. And we provided, uh, rental assistance to those families during that period and we were able to expend all those funds. We were one of the few jurisdictions in the entire country that made that. Was able to achieve that. And as a result, we got an additional allocation of a hundred and five thousand this year. Um, and we're able to offer that up to social service agencies as well. This is a one-time funding source. We expect next year to be down closer to that one point two five million dollar budget versus we're up closer to one point three. With this budget and an estimate. And I should say all of these are estimates. We're estimating the federal government's going to give us two hundred and fifty thousand. Certain, depending on certain budget cycles, sometimes there's threats to that money. Um, we don't think that's going to happen this year. We're pretty secure with the hundred and five and the one million does fluctuate based on. Um, sales, but it's, it's a pretty good trend that we, we observe. So I'm going to talk about public service grants and this is always just such a heartwarming. Um, part of this program. I think it's important to focus that only fifteen percent of the community development block grant budget can be used. For public services. And, um, we have a very formal process where we have the agencies apply. Um, they, well, they attend a pre-grant meeting. They make a presentation to the grant selection committee. Um, and then ultimately it ends up in front of the planning commission and city council for the funding. So it's a competitive process. And these are some of our partners in, um, providing social services to our community. But I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about, um, the proposed funding. Once again, these are estimates. If we don't get the full CDBG amount, we'll change these to percentages and. The percentage of funds will go to these agencies. Um, the subcommittee this year is recommending thirteen thousand to Alliance on Aging. Um, they provide, um, tax services to our senior, seniors at Shoals Community Center. And have done that for a number of years. So if you're a senior and need help getting your taxes prepared, you can go down and they will be prepared for you. CASA is the court-appointed. Advocates. I forget what the S stands for. Um, and this is really for, um. Our youth in our community that might be in a family situation where they're very involved in the court. And CASA provides a volunteer, trained volunteer to attend court dates with that individual. Um, according to our police department, this is a very valuable service for, um, the individuals going through this process. Um, we have some, we, the most change I've noticed in the last few years is with community human services. Um, as the number of homeless shelters are increasing on the peninsula. This is the one area of funding that we've seen the greatest change and I'll show that in my next slide. So, um, Casa de Noche Buena is a shelter in the city of Seaside. It was the first to open that provides fam- um, for families and children. Um, I was able to visit there. They have a community like kitchen there, a professional kitchen. They have formal caseworkers. And, um, it's a temporary shelter where people are admitted. They work with their social worker. And they've had a very good success rate in transitioning people out of homelessness. But that facility is actually in the city of Seaside. In the last few years, the city has contributed twenty thousand towards it. CH Safe Place is the homeless shelter for, um, youth between nineteen and twenty-five. It's on Pearl Street. Um, we've done a lot of work over there over the years. I think they have about twelve beds. Um, and they provide a wide variety of services to our homeless youth. Schuman Hart House is the new facility that's currently under construction on Franklin Street. I think it's Franklin and Cortez. It's at the old dance studio. And it will be, uh, it will provide thirty-five beds upon its completion and they expect opening in, um. This summer, so that's an exciting opportunity. Echo Fair Housing is a group that provides fair housing counseling services for the city. Were required under our community development block grant program to have the service. And that's basically if you. Are in any sorts of housing situation and believe that you've been discriminated against or there's some issue. Uh, these are trained counselors. They provide it for all of Monterey County, so we participate regionally in this program. I believe we get one full day of service for Monterey calls. And the remaining four days are for the entire Monterey County. According to their grant application and they're looking for a financial contribution of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. The Food Bank of Monterey County, I think we're all very familiar with it. The Food Bank is. Um, provides food to a wide variety of facilities. Um, I know they provide food to the gathering for women who provide lunch. A cup and I believe lunch and breakfast five days a week. And so they're supporting a lot of, just with food supplies. A lot of our, um, nonprofits. Um, they requested twenty thousand of CDBG and they also applied for that CARES Act funding at twenty thousand. Gathering for Women is, I believe, on El Dorado Street. Um, it's a really interesting place. If you haven't been there before, you walk in and they have a desk. Um, and there's a, there are social service workers helping women transition into housing. They provide a breakfast and lunch daily. I think the lunch, at least in the past, was like a to-go bag. Um, they have a shower on site. They have a cabinet with toiletries and different items. Um, and they provide general counseling as well. Interim Incorporated, um, fantastic service. They, um. They actually, under this program, will go out into the field with our police department. And they specialize in people that are, um, maybe having, uh, mental health issues. And help try to work through some really tough situations in the field. To, um, transition them into a different environment. Josephine Kern's Memorial Pool is a amazing facility in the city. Um, it's over. On the other side of the Naval Postgraduate School. And it provides a warm therapeutic pool for, um, predominantly disabled people. So if you are homebound and you're, you're not healthy enough to go to our sports center and need more. Assistance, you can fully accessible, access the pool and have warm pool therapy. For some people, this is their only outing and is a critical need. I do want to come back to Josephine Kern's Memorial Pool because we funded them at less money than they have in the past and that's a real concern for that agency. I know Lynn Young is here and, um, you're, you're going to have some funding decisions to make today. Legal Services for Seniors at ten thousand dollars. Um, they do a whole bunch of different programs. Including if there, I believe if there are concerns about residential care facilities and people need an advocate. To, as they're working through the residential care facilities, they'll go out and do that visit. They also provide tax services. And they do a lot of different services for seniors that are in need. Meals on Wheels, um, are proposing eighty thousand dollars of CARES Act funding. Um, and I think, or you may not be aware, but Meals on Wheels is in the process of, uh, expanding and consolidating their services. They've worked for years out of, in Pacific Grove, at the Sally Griffin Senior Center. And they're really going to be expanding their operations at the, um. The Veterans Clinic in, I believe it's Marina, um, as you see, as you have Highway One. And they're going to be able to serve a lot more meals. So you'll see that they're really trying to increase their capability. So what are some of the trends that we're seeing? I think CHS and their operating of new homeless shelters is definitely a moment of change and positive change on the peninsula. Um, but you can see last year we didn't fund Sherman, Schuman Hart House. That was zero. This year they're requesting twenty thousand dollars. Some of the, and, and I think as I, uh, listened to this, um, subcommittee, their primary interest, um, was. Homeless services was sort of the number one need that they were looking at is clearly identified. One of the challenges we have is with the Josephine Kern's Memorial Pool, um. That actually historically used to get about twenty thousand dollars and in about the last five years has more typically had about nine thousand dollars. It's sound that, um, that small amount of additional money is critical to their services. And I know one of the questions in front of you today is should we shift some of that money around? On, under the CDBG to bump Josephine Kern's Memorial Pool up to nine thousand. And, and make some slight shifts in the recommendations. And I think that's a question for the group. Other issues, I just want to talk broadly, um. The concept of emergency rental assistance didn't really. Well, became more, um, a discussion item during COVID as lots and lots of people are losing their jobs. And maybe losing their housing. And the city of Monterey was the first to step up and we had a exemption. Or a special program under CDBG where we could pay for emergency rental assistance. And we paid, uh, it was over nine hundred thousand dollars of emergency rental assistance to qualified households. That program then transformed regionally and that the money was given directly to United Way. Um, I called United Way prior to this report. They still have money, um, that they're giving out. But it's for applications that have already been filed. They have no new money for emergency rental assistance. I'm starting to hear at the council level, this is a, a priority. Um, we didn't receive applications for emergency rental assistance from nonprofits. Um, at this time, um, but. I just want to go back. This is the only money out of our budget that we can use for emergency rental assistance. And I guess I, my point is at the end of the day, we don't really have enough meeting, uh, money to meet all the needs at the levels we want. So. Emergency rental assistance is still a program out there that we're going to need to look for funding. So public infrastructure projects are different. Um, they are not subject to the cap. Under CDBG regulations and we only have one tier one project this year. Um, it's a recommended funding of an additional hundred thousand dollars for community kitchen improvements. At the Meals on Wheels new facility that's under constru- or under construction in Seaside, or I guess it's Marina. Um, last year we funded, um, food fillers and they're just about ready to get that money. There's a lot of hoops. But they're just about ready to get that. This year the, it's for like wrapping the, the packaging. To wrap the meals faster so they can produce those and get them out to the community. We also, um, typically have a tier two project. We're not recommending direct funding of this project right now, but. There's a really critical date the commission or everyone needs to be aware of. We only can have legally so much money in our account. By, I believe it's May fir- it's somewhere in May every year and we, um, there's what's called a timeliness test from the federal government. If you have too much money in your account and you haven't spent your. If you have too much money in your account and you haven't spent your funds, then you're actually out of compliance with CDBG rules. So we're constantly evaluating our income that we're receiving coming in that fluctuates against our expenses. And we, and our goal is to spend all those funds and then meet our timeliness test. Now, sometimes things happen. Most often in the infrastructure projects or in the purchase and resale. You know, especially we've given large amounts of money like to Veterans Transition Center in Marina. And something happens during construction, unforeseen circumstance, we can't pay. Like we're ready to, for the project to be finished, but maybe project delivery is not there. The architects probably understand that more than anyone is that when you're in the field, stuff happens when you're in construction. So this project gives us an ability that if we're having a problem with our timeliness test, that we can step in and execute quickly and make sure that we're meeting our timeliness obligations. It is also not subject to that fifteen percent cap that other funds are. So housing preservation programs, we have health and safety grants and loans for low-income homeowners. We have fifteen thousand dollars for the Mr. Fix-It Program. So we have fifteen thousand dollars for, like if you need, maybe you can no longer get into your house really well and you need a lift outside your house or you need a ramp. Or maybe your bathroom needs pull bars or you're, you can't get into your tub or shower anymore. The city has fifteen thousand dollars where we can come and do those minor improvements. We also have bigger programs. Unfortunately, there, I can think of two cases this year. I'll just say case study one. And sometimes these cases are people living in unsanitary conditions. And literally the water is pouring through their roof as they're sitting in their house because they have no means to repair their roof. We can do low-income loans that don't have to be paid off until the property is transferred. So in this one case, this year, we were able to replace the roof. This coming year, we hope to work with the property owner to remove the trash from the interior of the home. And to have, and then be able to see the condition of the interior of the house in more detail. That may involve new flooring, coverings that may involve, typically involves toilets and sinks that haven't been maintained properly. So we can give loans up to ninety thousand dollars. They're low-interest loans and they're not due until transfer of property. The other part of our project that's super exciting, we have two or three of these units a year. Where we have a low-income unit. I can think of one right now that's about ready to go on sale for a single person. It's a one-bedroom, one-bath condominium unit. It'll be, I think, being sold for about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for a single-person household for two. I think it goes up to two people in that one bedroom. It goes up to about a hundred and ninety thousand. So we acquire those units. So we'll take you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. There's a certain amount in the contract with CPI that we purchased the unit back from the one, in most cases, the person's passed away. So from the estate, we will purchase that unit. We will then go in and in some cases, especially if the person's passed away, we'll rehabilitate the unit. And then we, we have a real estate agent and we sell that unit to the next qualified income. So that seems like a lot of money at six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. But if you look at us being able to turn over two to three housing units to new families at about a hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand dollars per housing unit, there isn't a better deal for our city. I'm looking at new construction costs for multifamily construction, a hundred percent low income. And we're looking at costs per unit of about six hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit with a nonprofit housing developer. So it's so valuable to save these existing units and make sure that they're saved and transferred to the next qualified household. Planning and administration is at two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. This is capped by our CDBG budget as well. The audits and the amount of bookkeeping with this program are extensive. We are audited every other year. And our goal is to have meticulous records and there's a lot of steps with all of the programs and that's what this covers. So I mentioned the action plan. It's, it's a process. We get a new budget every July first. And then we're starting the programs, but starting in October and November, while we're executing last year's budget, we're starting the program for the next year. And so for this program, in November, we released the notices of funding availability. In December, we had the grant workshop. In January, we had the applicant presentations to the subcommittee. And February seventeenth, we released the draft action plan that you have attached to your packet. It starts a thirty-day public comment period. As required, we're having within that timeframe, the Planning Commission Public Hearing. That's tonight. We will be having the City Council hearing on April eighteenth. And then the action plan has to, is due and uploaded into federal systems on May fifteenth. And we hope to get funded. It's usually, we, it's due May fifteenth. We usually get our funds starting coming in August for that year and then we start all over. So that's our program. We're recommending that the, that you recommend that the City Council adopt the Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Funds and authorize submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I think the one thing we're really looking for you to discuss is the funding for the social service grants. I know you're going to hear for the Josephine Kern's Memorial Pool and whether or not you want to suggest moving any of the money in one direction or the other.
Thank you. Could you explain just briefly the, the subcommittee makeup?
Yeah, so the subcommittee has typically the Planning Commission Chair historically. We have a representative from our community action team, our police department, who's out in the field working with a lot of our homeless individuals and, and our providers. And then also someone from the Community Development Department.
And then our staff consultant.
And our staff consultant is there at all times. So Damian Delaney, who's online, works with communities throughout California on Community Development Block Grant Programs. So he has that statewide perspective that we may not have at our city level. So it's helpful as we're discussing various issues.
Thanks, Kim. Any questions for Kim, some commissioners?
Two questions.
Sure.
Remember last year, either Meals on Wheels or the Food Bank got a million dollars to construct a new kitchen?
So they received from the city of Monterey last year, a hundred thousand dollars to do the food fillers. If they most likely have other grants that they're piecing together for the kitchen. And I see Jacobs here with Meals on Wheels. And he'll be able to maybe provide a greater perspective on their facility that's opening up.
Well, I just was mine, added a zero there, didn't I? Question, the two buildings that are on Van Buren on the ravine side of the, the low in, or middle-income apartment building. Are those owned by the city and are those going to be rehabilitated for people to live in?
So they're privately owned. The property owner has completed their allotment adjustment process. And they're planning to either rehabilitate those units or demolish and reconstruct. They're still working through that. But they're privately owned.
Okay, I thought the city owned them.
Any other questions?
So, thanks, Kim. The, the, most of the funds are federal. This is basically federal money.
Yeah, so out of our housing budget to this afternoon, we're talking about our federal allotment through the, it's through the Housing and Urban Development Department from the federal government. It's called Community Development Block Grant.
Right. And it seems like the way we could shuffle these acorns trying to, let's say the goal was to bring Kern's back up to nine thousand. If all of the twenty thousand recipients were reduced by six hundred, that would and, and that, that money was allocated to Kern's, that, that kind of a shuffle is what you're suggesting?
I'm saying that's a possibility. So, and you could shift it from one one group or multiple or however you want within that hundred and seventy-two thousand. We don't have because that, that's what we're estimating is the percentage of our budget. And I do need to emphasize again, we anticipate receiving that full amount. And we anticipate a budget of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. If we fall short, then that'll be based on percentages for each of the social service agencies.
Sort of prorated out.
Any other questions? Mike Dawson, I want you to fill left out there.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine. I read the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I, I read it as well and I Kim, have you found? Now I see that it's Monterey.
Microphone.
Thanks, Mike. Working group, we have Monterey and San Benito County. Why did it expand to two counties?
I'm, so our CDBG program is for the city of Monterey. So I'm not
I understand it, but I understand there's a working group component there, within the county?
It's not on Community Development Block Grant money. It might be on a different housing issue.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, any other questions before we open this up?
So is there a maximum amount that you can write your grant to HUD for the community block grant funding? Is it?
So our entitlement amount is prescribed to us and it's based on an allocation at the federal level and Damian might be able to give us more input on that. So that's, that's a number that's basically, as I understand it, designated for our city on an annual basis. Damian, I don't know if you can unmute yourself and provide any, like, how does the federal government decide the amount of entitlement a jurisdiction receives?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you. I wish I was there with you this evening. The federal government determines the allocation for each entitlement city through an algorithm. And that is based on the city's population, the percent low mod, and a few other factors. It also takes into account any new cities that may be receiving their entitlement for the first year. Over the past few years, we have seen a reduction in our block grant funds. I think there was a hiccup in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, that it actually went up for the first time in about seven years. But we have been told that we are probably going to be getting less than what we think we're going to be getting for the upcoming year. As Kim mentioned, our entire budget is based on this estimate that we will be receiving any day now, the allocation from HUD. And our, our program income is also based on historically what we've received in, in previous years in the program income. The only number we know for sure is that one oh five nine sixty-eight for the block grant, for the CDBG CV funds. That has already been allocated to us. Hope answered your question.
Anything else? Any other comments or questions? Okay, then we're going to open this up to the public for comment.
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org test. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And we do have commenters in person, but for those viewing from Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're joined by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to mute upon, to unmute and call upon. And one last thing, we have three minutes. And there is a hand raised online after this.
Okay, thank you. I will try to make this brief. Thank you, Chair Fletcher and the committee. Miss Call and your team as well. My name is Jacob Schaefer. I am the Senior Director of Advancement at Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula, based in Pacific Grove, and my team is responsible for the CDBG applications as well as the administration of any funds that are awarded and the reporting. And I am here today just to say thank you and extend our gratitude from Meals on Wheels to the committee and the city and Kim's team. The capital and service support that we have received from the city over the last eight years has really helped to sustain our programs and help meet a rising demand in the community. As you may know, Meals on Wheels programs across the country are sustained by federal money that comes through the Older Americans Act. That money has stayed relatively flat as the demand for our services have doubled since twenty twenty. So having the city of Monterey step up in this way is, is a very big deal for us because the primary source of our funding has stayed flat. I'd like to talk briefly about clients in the city of Monterey. As I mentioned, over the last two and a half years, demand for our services and meals prepared has doubled. Clients currently in the city of Monterey are about two hundred and fifty over the course of a one-year period. And that, that stays consistent with the doubling in demand. Nearly ninety percent of that group of two hundred and fifty clients is low income. And a third of that group is very low income. So again, we are very thankful for your support, both on the capital and the services side and you are helping keep our wheels turning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
You mentioned the two hundred and fifty, what's your total client base?
Eleven hundred.
So how many, how many meals are all eleven hundred people getting five meals a week?
Each delivery, Monday through Friday, is two and a half meals. So there's a hot entree, a sandwich, a soup and a salad with some drinks and fruit and things of that nature. So each client gets two and a half meals per day. And what we like to call a double delivery on Friday to get them through the weekend. Meals on Wheels, just to note, started as supplementary nutrition for these clients and it has now become the chief source of nutrition for these homebound group and, yeah. Just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have a comment online. Natalie Hoy. You should be able to unmute.
Hi. My name is Natalie. I am the Grants Manager at Community Human Services and I do just want to take some time and thank you so much for the city's support over the past years that they have partnered with us for our homeless programs. And then also, Kim, thank you so much for your presentation on behalf of our proposals. And I thank you, Council, also for just considering and considering our proposals and our programs today. I just wanted to give a quick overview of what these services do for the community and what the support will do for our programs. As you know, we have three proposals currently for our Safe Place Emergency Shelter, which is for homeless youth aged eighteen to twenty-four in Monterey. And that's a twelve-bed overnight shelter and resource center for homeless youth. The funding will actually go to help support shelter monitors and the operations of that shelter and keep it open for youth to drop in and they stay overnight, have a safe place to sleep, receive meals and emotional supports. And they get a lot of referrals to ancillary, ancillary community services as well as meals and laundry. And we, we expect during that grant term that we'll be able to provide, you know, fifteen hundred bed nights to homeless youth. And we, we expect during that grant term that we'll be able to provide, you know, fifteen hundred, um, bed nights to homeless youth. And then our two emergency shelters, Casa de Noche Buena and Schuman Heart House, which will be opening later this year. Um, they are emergency shelters for single women and families with children. Um, the typical service model for that is that guests come in and they stay for about ninety days. Um, potentially up to six months if they have justified extensions. And our case managers provide formal housing navigation and supports for them to facilitate their exits into permanent housing. Um, we have had since opening CASA in twenty twenty-one in January, um, an average waitlist of about two hundred individuals. Um, which is why it is, it is imperative when we found such a high need to open the second shelter, which will follow the same service model. Um, so we are really excited to open that because that's really going to allow us to serve a lot more individuals, um, in our area and actually get them housed. Um, and connect them with community benefits and services as well. So that is currently under construction, um, as you heard, and will open later this year. And we are, um, and as Kim mentioned earlier, and the need also for the emergency rental assistance. And rental assistance in general is, is pretty high, and we've seen a trend of that also with our, our shelter programs. Um, we have really been pursuing other avenues of funding for rental assistance and rapid rehousing so that we can actually facilitate that and help place, uh, people into permanent housing so that they have stable financial. Um, just by ability to actually stay and retain their housing and, and continue to be there. So we are going to work really hard on that as well. And I just want to thank you for considering us and, and our proposals and just all of the years of partnership that you've given. It's very much appreciated. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
I see no more hands on, um, rage online. And would you like to provide a comment?
Uh, can you hear me? Am I good? Your, your microphone should have a green light on, on it.
Oh, it doesn't?
But you, can you hear me? Okay, okay, good. Um, first of all, uh, my name is Lynn Young. I'm the Executive Director of Josephine Kearns Pool. Um, we want to thank City of Monterey for its many years of support. Um, this year, we are celebrating our fiftieth anniversary, thanks to the funding and all the help that the city of Monterey has given us. Um, we provide therapeutic warm water exercise for senior disabled residents of Monterey without regard to ability to pay, um, age, disability, or duration of need. And, um, Kearns Pool is absolutely unique, uh, in, on the entire Central Coast. Um, we have, uh, an ADA facility with ninety-two degree water, uh, private dressing rooms. Um, our aquatic specialists have kinesiology degrees. And they are, um, aquatic therapy and rehabilitation certified, along with many other certifications. Um, the majority of people who come to Kearns Pool require one-to-one full assistance in the water. Um, and they're very low income or low income. Um, exercise in the pool is especially important for seniors, uh, and elders working to maintain their mobility. And it's absolutely critical for people with secondary conditions such as, uh, heart disease or diabetes. For many, uh, being able to move in Kearns Pool, uh, in the warm water is the only time they are not in a wheelchair or in a bed. And for some clients, our accessible showers are the main opportunity to bathe. Uh, because of the inaccessibility of their, uh, home, of the bathing situation at home. Um, these services enable people to remain living independently, thus potentially reducing the need for more expensive residential and healthcare services subsidized by municipal funds. Because Kearns Pool programs are provided at low to no cost, they can help underserve people with limited incomes to pay for housing without sacrificing needed health services. This level of service is one reason why municipalities are not able to provide these services to their residents through existing programs such as the Monterey, um, Sports Center. Another reason is the expense. Twenty-five percent of our clients are senior and disabled residents of the city of Monterey. And the budget for providing their specialized services is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. The CDB funding recommendation for Kearns Pool, as you've seen, is fifty-four hundred dollars. And this is at a time when just heating the pool has increased from eighteen hundred to twenty-six hundred dollars a month. Even with diligent fundraising and leveraging funding from foundations and donations, it is becoming increasingly difficult to provide essential services for elderly and disabled residents of Monterey. We ask that the city of Monterey continue to pri- prioritize the essential services to Kearns Pool through CDBG funding. And with your support, we are confident that we'll be able to continue to benefit your residents for another fifty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you. And I think that does it for public input. Uh, we'll bring it back to Commissioners to consider.
Uh, before, before we comment, could you describe Echo Fair Housing one more time, Kim?
So they're a fair housing counselor. So, for example, the city of Monterey will how, receive a complaint. Somebody didn't rent to me because of my ethnicity. Somebody, um, is unfairly raising my rent. Um, we get a wide variety of, um, fair housing issues that predominantly renters. Um, that are concerned about various issues. We then, um, are able to connect them directly with Echo Fair Housing. Um, they have a counselor that will call that person, and then they will call the property owner as well, and then try to mediate the situation. Echo Fair Housing also does, um, a, um, operations where they, they go out and send somebody out into the field to try to rent a facility that, and will look to see whether or not that, um, property owner is exercising fair housing practices. And if not, um, then there is counseling that occurs as well. So there's a proactive piece to Echo Fair Housing as well. Um, it's been a little while since I've, I think it was like last year, we got information, they did it countywide. And like the percentages of, um, property owners that they thought, um, needed improvements in the fair housing arena. And so they could provide counseling and then go through that. So they are a fair housing counselor advocacy group.
All right, then my comment is that the bulk of these, with the exception of the Echo Fair Housing are one-to-one social services for people in real dire straits. Fact that there's a two-hundred-plus waitlist for Casa de Noche Buena, uh, is a real example. And I, I might throw out a suggestion that we reduce Echo Fair Housing by three thousand six hundred dollars and add it to the five thousand four hundred dollars for the Josephine Kearns Memorial Pool, which would give them an allocation of nine thousand dollars back where they used to be. It does suggest.
A welcome suggestion to that. Uh, Cherry, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I had another calculation. I mean, this is kind of arbitrary. It's the same, it's the same math approach. Basically, there's six recipients getting twenty thousand each. If you reduced each one of those by six hundred, uh, that would be thirty-six hundred also. So there are a number of ways, um, you know, maybe taking six hundred from each of those people wouldn't be quite as much of a hit on, on, on the group. What did, uh, a question for Kim, what did, uh, Kearns get last year?
Um, nine thousand dollars. They've, the last several years, except for one year during COVID where they weren't able to provide service for a while. I think they dropped to four thousand, but in the last immediate history, it's been nine thousand. In the distant past, we provided up to, I believe, twenty-two thousand dollars for Josephine Kearns Memorial.
And, and was there some reason the subcommittee, uh, arrived at the fifty-four hundred number?
Um, as I remember, there's a priority for, um, I think there was a lot of discussion about home, the need for homeless services. And, um, there was concerns about that, like, how do we, how can we leverage and continue to improve our homeless services? I will say our point in time count that was done last year, our homeless, um, and this is a one-time count. So I take it with a grain of salt, but I think it, it was actually, um, it reduced for all of Monterey County. The city of Monterey reduced from about two hundred, um, homeless persons to a hundred homeless persons. It actually showed a drop, and that was fairly consistent with other, um, um, observations. So, um, I'd like to think we're making a dent in the situation. Um, I think once the Schuman Heart House is open with CHS efforts, you know, I hope to see those numbers continue to drop.
And that's Sherman, what is that?
Schuman Heart House, and that's going to be the new facility located on Franklin, and I believe it's Cortez Streets. It's the old dance facility.
Oh, yeah.
Right there on the corner. It's also a historic resource. That's sort of cool.
And how many, uh, beds?
Thirty-five beds. It'll be, um, I believe focused on women and children and families. Um, very similar to the Casa de Noche Buena model that's been operational for a couple of years now in Seaside. And that was really the first big effort in Seaside for a facility there. And I think it's, at least it looks very successful to me.
Mike Bassell?
I gotta feel gratitude for what the city has accomplished. Thanks, Mike. I want to compliment the, the PD in particular because we're dealing with the homeless. They're where the rubber meets the road. And I think that they've done an exceptional job, not quite in their job description, but they're helping people, and that is their primary job. When I look at, at the numbers, I don't see CDBG funds accumulating more money. And I'm not really an advocate for just throwing money at a problem. But I, I think that we need to come up with a way to grow some funds. We need to keep looking at different grants and so forth to accomplish that, that mission. One of the things that for years, I've always thought that it would be nice if when we got this package, we could see the numbers of cases that all these caregivers have accomplished in the past year. Because over a period of, of a couple of years, we would be able to see if we're looking at the right solution for some of the problems. And maybe look at some alternatives. And I know I've, I've sat down with some of these people in the past, and I know that it's, it's driven by needs as well as cost analysis. But I think it would help us on this commission and maybe at council to look at this more holistically, if we could see some measures. Instead of just anecdotal, you're doing good, keep it up. I've talked to people on the, in, in some of these cases. First of all, it's, it's hard for them to talk about it because it's not something we normally talk about. But they are, they do express gratitude. Um, and for that, I think that the city has become a good example of caring for the people that live here. I ask them what their frustrations are. Really, most of them wouldn't even talk about frustrations. They're dealing with frustration of just eating day-to-day frustration. So try to pin it down to something that we could do to improve it is not something that they really talked about. Um, and I have some people that just will not talk about it. But that's the best that we can try to measure from people, how we can, can help. And I know that council is really pushing this whole area. And it's, it needs to be accomplished in any city, not just ours. But, uh, we need to have something that we can measure. Um, I did too many years of working with any grants of money that required measures, and I, I think it's, would be due here as well. Thank you.
Bob and then Mike?
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's any way we can make the HUD money go further. Is there a possibility of working with Monterey County Gives or the Weekly? And just to publicize, make it better known, the kind of choices that the city's making. And maybe having other people then follow through and making charitable, um, donations based on the priorities that, that you guys have established.
So what I haven't provided you, um, is the actual grant application from each social service agency. Um, the Grants Committee looks at that, um, the Subcommittee. But what they do is they provide for each of their programs, all the other funding sources that contribute to that program. So I think we heard from, uh, Ms. Young, it costs a hundred and, a hundred thousand plus to run the program for this, you know, in the city of Monterey or for Monterey residents, of which we give a piece. There's all sorts of other funding sources when I look at these. Um, and I'm happy to, if you want to see them, you know, I can follow up and email applications to you. So you can see how all of these agencies are very adept at piecing together multiple funding sources for their budget each year. They're not a one-stop shop. They are leveraging the money. They're saying Monterey's contributing this amount. Um, some of them, the, uh, foundation, Monterey County Foundations, this amount. Others qualify for, um, more, um, formal state funding, especially in the homeless arena. Um, there's specific funding sources that they can attain, so they are leveraging the money. Um, I probably just didn't do a good enough job in explaining to you the, um, how they're doing that. But I could follow up with that and show you, um, what they've submitted.
Thank you. Bobby, anything else? Okay, how about Mike Dawson?
Hello, hello. Um, I did notice that, uh, look, going through the, the, the grant proposals that, uh, there was nothing in there for the veterans. Um, the Veterans Transition Center, um, is a, is a way to spend, to spend serious money. Um, but it, I wonder why, why they weren't shown this year.
Yeah, we had a couple of groups that didn't submit this year. Um, Covia Home Match has left Monterey County. We funded them in the past. Um, and then Veterans Transition Center did not apply this year. And they've, they've received a lot of money from the city over the years. I think well in excess of a million dollars. We've paid towards rehabilitation of the former Ford Orde housing stock into, um, multiple people live in, in one, one old house. They usually double up the beds, um, like two in each room. So, um, we've had some great projects out there, but not this year. They didn't submit. Salvation Army also didn't submit, which is unusual. They usually submit as well. The thing I can say is this is a very, this process is the exact same every year. And most of the social service agencies, if not all of them, are very, very well aware of this very formal process that we go through every year.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Okay, so let's get down to business.
Um, I, I wanted to also congratulate the city on the extra hundred and five grand. I don't quite understand that, but congratulations anyway. It's for doing a good job.
It was. Our team, led by Grant Leonard, and there was Sarah Zeal and Eric Palmer, ran our emergency rental assistance program during COVID. And that was a hard program to run with all the income qualification and writing checks to property owners. And we got the money out the door ultimately, which was the goal. And I forget the statistic, but it was, um, not that many jurisdictions in the country were able to achieve that.
And Grant Leonard was in, in charge of that.
He was, yeah.
Yeah, he just good job. Th- then, um, the, I just wanted to comment too that it's, um, it's a rotating, the chair is rotating position. So everybody get a chance eventually to sort of get into the granular detail on this project. And it's, it's really amazing how much, God, you have people living in billion-dollar homes in Pebble Beach, you know, and, and here we are. You know, they're fighting over five thousand dollars, and they, they come in with all these detailed, they have to do a lot of paperwork. It's, it's a five thousand dollars and they, they come in with all these detailed, they have to do a lot of paperwork. It's, it's a very impressive and humane thing that, that all these people do. It's, it's amazing how much heart there is out there. And also the you know, the city is quite generous, giving to Marina and projects in Seaside, and it really is a regional thing. And I, I think the city deserves a lot of credit for its generosity to not just the city, but to other other institutions in the, in the vicinity.
Okay, so well, I sat on the Subcommittee. And I, I, you know, that's the second time I've been able to do it. It, it's, it is a, quite a process and a quite a thorough process. And, you know, the recommendations are just going to continue to, to maneuver a little bit until it gets to City Council. And so that brings us to what does the Commission want to do with the numbers that have been presented this evening? You made a recommendation. Sandy made a recommendation. Any, any other recommendations or does someone want to make a motion with their recommendation or?
I'd like to make a motion with the attorneys.
Okay.
I think it makes a lot more sense to kind of do a little pain to do a lot of good. And there's just, I can't imagine how many other organizations out there could use the support. And so whatever we can do to minimize the pain is probably the best thing to do.
A second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
And just to reiterate, that is taking the six recipients, each receiving twenty thousand dollars, reducing that number by six hundred dollars each, which would be a grand total of three thousand six hundred dollars. And shifting that over to a donation to the Josephine Kearns Memorial School.
Correct. Are there comments from Commissioners? Okay, Jennifer, can we have a vote?
Yes. Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Freshner Blue?
Yes.
Freshner Brassfield?
Yeah.
Freshner Dawson?
Yes.
Freshner Freeman?
Yes.
And Freshner Lataca?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion carries. It is not appealable to the council because it's already going to the council.
And I believe that hearing date was, it's in April, I think April eighteenth. So I encourage all interested parties to attend that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our afternoon session. We're going to recess until fifteen at seven. Yeah. Four minutes to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
I'm front lit.
Turning one.
Okay, let's get started. We're gonna reconvene our meeting of the City of Monterey Planning Commission Evening Session. And can we start with rope ball please?
Yes, first Chair Fletcher.
Yes, here.
And Commissioner Blue.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner LaTasca.
Here.
Thank you, we have a full commission present tonight. And for staff, we have Community Development Director Cole, Principal Planner Overy, and myself, Reporting Secretary Cleary. And if you don't mind, I would like to take this time to announce to the public, even at home, how they can join the Zoom meeting to provide public comments. We do encourage members of the public to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects to you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you'd like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that phone number is 833-568-8864. If that number doesn't work, there are more listed on the meeting agenda at icertchmonterey.org. You will need a meeting webinar ID. It is 1619908039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. Provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, please stay within that limit.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll take public comments. And this is anybody who wishes to address the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda but is in the purview of the Planning Commission. Anyone in the chambers? How about online?
I see no hands raised online.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number three. Consider 600 Hawthorne Street Use Permit UP 2202.
I have good news, we're actually on item five.
Oh.
Noon.
I just woke up from my evening.
Yeah.
Okay, so, item number five, thank you. We'll get this rolling, I will. Consider 2600 Sand Dunes Drive Use Permit Application UP 230031 for Structural Alterations to an Existing Hotel Property. The applicant is Michael Stanton, Stanton Architecture. Owner is ACP Monterey Hotels LLC. This is Visitor Accommodation Facility Zoning District Commercial General Plan. General Plan Land Use Designation, it is exempt from CEQA requirements per Article 19, Section 15301, Class 1, and Section 15303, Class 3.
Thank you Chair, my name is Fernando Overy, Principal Planner for the City of Monterey. I will make a presentation for you. Okay. So, today the Planning Commission will review 2600 Sand Dunes Drive for proposed structural alterations. The recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the structural alterations proposed. This is the site, it's at the easternmost part of Monterey at the border of Seaside. And it's an existing visitor accommodation facility, which is the zoning of the property. The land use is commercial. And it's, the structure is a four-story hotel. And there are also meeting rooms on site, a port crecheur, parking lots, a pool, decks, and other amenities. The city charter requires that the Planning Commission review structural alterations in the visitor accommodation facility zone. And it also says that this review shall follow the use permit process. ARC review is required for non-structural alterations in the VAF zone. And the extent of the proposed improvements includes both structural and non-structural alterations, but today it is your task to review only the structural alterations per the city charter. This is the site plan. And the only structural alterations that are proposed are two egress stairs on either side of the hotel. So here, the applicant labeled this as the south side, so these are egress stairs on the south side, which exit onto the south parking lot. And then on the north side, also similarly, some egress stairs that exit onto the north parking lot. And the purpose was to improve exiting for hotel visitors and employees. And then, on the, here at the bottom is Sand Dunes. Just so that you can orient yourself, and then at the top is the beach. Most people enter the site, well, you can enter the site through Sand Dunes Drive here. And the port crecheur is right here. And then the lobby is here. These are just some three-dimensional renderings of the proposed stairs. The north stairs go all the way up to the fourth story from the, from the parking lot. And the south stairs, they exit onto the parking lot on the south side. And this is just an elevation of the stairs so that you can see some of the details. The railing is going to be made of wood. And you can see on the right side is the color palette. So the wood is gonna be like a light tone beige or light gray. And the background is going to be a darker gray. So, in order to approve this project, the Planning Commission would need to make the use permit findings. And the first one is that the use is in accord with the objectives and of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. The hotel use is not changing. And the structural alterations would facilitate exiting for hotel visitors and staff. There is no change to the occupancy of the hotel. The proposal will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use. And will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The hotel operations would not be changing, the stairs would provide additional exiting routes. And the stairs would not create an expansion of the existing hotel use. And would not impede the privacy or views of people at nearby properties. The third finding is that the use will comply with any specific condition required. And the resolution contains standard as well as special conditions. The only special condition is that these improvements also need Architectural Review Committee approval before a building permit can be issued. And with that, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution and exhibit. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also going to make a presentation.
Thank you, any questions?
This one, this is a, replacing a stairway or is it a brand-new stairway?
Oh, they're brand-new.
Thank you.
And also at the same time, the last time I was at that, there's an internal stairway inside the building as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, can we have the applicant make a presentation?
Applicant is in the, I think, joined as a public, a member of the public. So if maybe they could raise their hand and we can let them unmute.
Quick reminder to raise your hand via Zoom, please use either raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen or by phone. Dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute.
So the applicants are in the chambers, they don't have any specific thing to add to the presentation, if you have questions, they're available to answer them.
Okay.
The project.
I have a question.
So we'll just need the applicants to come to the.
As I understand it, this is to accommodate your clients. But it also opens up your vulnerabilities. Have you considered that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I understand it makes it easier for your clients to go back down to the ground level. But have you considered the vulnerability by doing that?
The vulnerability, I'm not.
One of the, one of the things I was trained in is crime prevention by environmental design. When you put access to a parking lot or to a blind side of the building, that allows the, anybody that wants to commit a crime also acts there.
Oh, I see.
So, have you considered cameras?
So, the, the building, we can certainly add cameras if we feel that's necessary, it would not be a problem. We haven't specifically talked about it, although we do have security on site today. The stairs as they exist today are also exterior, so this isn't really any different. It's unlike a hotel where you go inside the lobby and then get to the stairs and perhaps they're secured from the outside. This is all open, but kind of the similar condition they already have.
I'm not gonna make it a recommendation, I'm just giving my concerns to you because you're, you're allowing access to your clients and their rooms. And if, if you put in maybe two cameras on each stairway, one overt, one covert, you'll be able to monitor that kind of access. Trust me, I've handled a lot of incidents involving hotels. And this is a concern of mine when people design a structure that allows access to criminal activity.
Yeah, well, thank you, yeah, definitely.
Could you state your name just for the record, please?
Christina Zimmer.
Thank you. Any other questions for Christine? Okay, so we shall open this up to public hearing? Yes.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Dwight, I'm a resident of Monterey. I will say, it would be a convenience to have the stairwell, and I immediately thought that it, with the stairwell at the, at the far end, at the park end, it really is inviting anybody who's coming off the street to just come in and not be, not really be seen. So, I agree with you on that. And I love to go to their fourth store, story restaurant. And I have used the stairs and you have to go out way down to get the stairs on the outside, so that would make it more convenient to leave that way. The issue that I want to raise is not specifically in this application, but I think should be addressed by it. And that is, the previous owner, I believe, was the one who put the lights out on the parking lot. And in so doing, they did not hood the lights. And the lights hit the drivers on Highway One in the eye at night. And anyone who's driving along Sand Dunes Drive toward the west is also hit in the eyes by, by their lights. There needs to be hoods placed on, on two lights that are feeding down onto the parking lot because it bleeds over. And when we do have fog, it really makes it hard to see. I frequently come in late at night and, and the lights as they are mounted now are truly providing a danger situation to any driver coming by. So, would, would just suggest that that be addressed, I mean, there's, they, they are not asking to add the lights, but the lights were not the originals, those were changed out. The lights that were on the building have already been replaced. And, and they no longer shine into the eyes, but these two in the parking lot are a danger, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Anyone else in the audience here? And how about online, do we have any hands raised?
No hands are raised online.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to commissioners for discussion.
It seems like this is a, a very functional design. That's, I'm not sure, it appears to be basically for building code type of exiting sort of thing. Or just for the utility of the guests at their site. So I, I'm glad the ARC is gonna have a shot at it. And I have, it's, it seems like the only reason it's here is because the zoning requires it. Otherwise, it would just be a ARC item, I think. So, I'll recommend, I'll make a motion to, or I'm sorry, let everybody else speak first.
I don't have.
I would only ask that the staff ask the ARC and/or their staff to see if those lights are old standard and maybe need to replace by an updated standard.
Mike Lawson, are you there?
Here you are. Still here.
You have any wisdom you'd like to share with us on this project?
I've got lots of that, too.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I think Sharon has a good point there and, and Commissioner Brassfield. So, I will make a motion to approve the, this item. I don't have the text in front of me, but the 2600 Sand Dunes Drive, I think it is, as proposed. With the, can we, I don't know if it's a condition, maybe a direction to ARC to review the lighting, exterior lighting compliance with the city code.
Can we even pull that in to what this application is, that's what I'd like to know first?
So we've historically allowed, I don't know whether lights are part of the ARC application or not. Fernanda probably knows, but we, the Planning Commission in the past has said, you know, this is out of our jurisdiction, but if ARC, if, you know, please look at this, it's part of your decision-making process.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I think that could be a condition of approval, and I don't, Fernanda, is the ARC application, is that on the agenda tomorrow?
Yes, it does include lighting, but it did not refer to those two lights that were shining over the parking lot. So I didn't see those being proposed for replacement.
Yeah, so what we can do is, I mean, clearly the applicant has heard the concern, so we can ask them if they're willing to change those two lights, and if so, the Architectural Review Committee could consider that or, and maybe designate staff to approve.
So I'll, I'll keep my motion with, with not a condition, but just a suggestion that the applicant and ARC discuss the existing parking lot lighting.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Right, Mike Brassfield, second. Further discussion? Seeing that there is none, Jennifer, can we have a vote, please?
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Blue.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Thank you, this motion carries with a vote of six, and it is appealable to the City Council with forms found at the Planning Office in the next ten days. And it will also be going to ARC tomorrow.
Thank you, okay, so we're on to item number six. Consider recommending a resolution to the City Council establishing objective design standards for the downtown and lighthouse-specific plans. And amending the plans to clarify visitor accommodation facility district requirements, adding massage establishment requirements and definition. Adding fence and wall requirements. Adding marker space use classification and definition. Clarifying residential minor and major. First floor, four units or more requirements. Adding new subdivision minimum lot size with requirements, updating streetscape lighting requirements. And amending the utility major definition to include water facilities, this is exempt from CEQA, Article 19, Section 15305+5. And this is continued from our January 24th meeting. And who, is it Fernanda, are you gonna be doing this one?
Yes, thank you. I have a very brief presentation. Because I'd like to leave enough time for discussion. So let me pull it up. Okay. So, a reminder of the definition and the state law of what objective design standards mean. They are standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to submission. On December 13th, 2022, at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission continued this item to January 24th to allow the commissions to architects to review the objective standards and additional public comments submitted in December in more detail with city staff. And so the group, which was me, Dan. And so the group, which was me, Dan Fletcher, and Terry Latassa, we met on January seventeenth. That was our first meeting. We did not get through all of the standards at that meeting. So on January twenty fourth, the item was continued to allow additional review time. We met again on January twenty fifth and February twenty first to finalize the recommendations. And so those are in attachment three as redlined. And they are exhibits A and B. So the summary of the changes are outdoor seating can meet open space requirements, but the one bench per two residential units requirement was eliminated. And public artwork cannot meet open space requirements. Common open space was defined to be for the shared use of building occupants. In the lighthouse specific plan area, the third story of a building shall be set back twelve feet from lighthouse and phone street property line and twelve feet from a side street property line. Roofs can be any form. So all of the listed roof forms were eliminated. At block corners where the building contains an entrance, the exterior transition space shall include at least one of the following. Planters made of ceramic, wood, metal, cement, and or main street slash stone. Planters shall be no taller than five feet and have a base no larger than twenty square feet. And landscaping pursuant to the landscaping list or outdoor seating. The next one is variation in architectural detailing, parapet and materials is required irrespective of the building frontage length. The previous standard had a minimum building frontage length that had to be met before this standard would kick in. Similarly, building facade and or parapet heights must be divided into two or more divisions irrespective of the building frontage length. Premium fractured and metal siding materials are allowed in addition to the more traditional brick, stone, smooth stucco, wood, concrete, and adobe. So those are the more significant changes that were made. There was some other cleanup language that is in attachment three. The planning, the two commissioners did want the full commission to discuss the following two standards. The first one being development projects shall consider new Monterey residential views. If there are view impacts, the view should be shared between the properties when feasible. And staff's recommendation about this one is that we worked with our legal counsel to find either find or craft objective language for view sharing. However, we could not find any examples from other communities. All examples that were found had subjective language in it. Our legal counsel decided that an objective view standard would be an extensive regulation since the relevant view and what qualifies as an obstruction would need to be defined. And every view of every property in New Monterey would need to be defined and an obstruction percentage assigned for each relevant horizontal as well as vertical view identified. So just keep in mind that in order for a view sharing standard to be objective, we would have to use numerical values for every view identified. And then the second standard that our planning commissioners wanted to discuss was the protection of landmark trees. Currently, the tree standard reads all projects shall protect and preserve existing trees. If trees are proposed for removal, they shall be replaced on site at a three replacement for one removal ratio. Their replacement trees shall be fifteen gallon in size and shall be one or more species listed in the landscaping list. A terminal permit is required if the project proposal does not meet this replacement ratio or if the replacement trees die. And something to note here is that the city's current tree preservation ordinance only has one required finding that needs to be made in order to approve removal of a tree. And this required finding is the same for regular trees as well as landmark trees. And this finding is that the tree prevents reasonable development of permitted uses. And so currently, there is no distinction between removal of a landmark tree versus a regular tree under our city preservation ordinance. We did receive additional comments for this meeting. But staff believes that the proposed standards do the best at keeping the neighborhood character and creating compatibility with our street infrastructure without precluding construction of eligible multifamily housing projects. The recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the attached resolution establishing these objective standards and other amendments as shown in the published packet. I'm available for questions. And you can, you may also ask our two commissioners. Because they work very hard to come up with these amendments.
If you finish, Fernanda, if I can just make a couple more comments. You know, I feel like we're losing so much in some ways through our discretionary process with our architectural review committee on new projects. And I just want to acknowledge that upfront. I think the projects that have gone through our processes have resulted in good design. And there's been comments, but to be clear, this is a penalty for not having constructed our regional housing needs allocation from the state of California. And I know Commissioner Brassfield just attended a commissioner training, and I was just looking through the slides. And it's all about objective design standards and basically creating a process to generate housing based on a checklist that can be known by all the parties in advance to streamline development. If the city in this next cycle builds the three thousand six hundred and fifty four housing units, which I'll just say is unlikely considering our water supply situation. This is our future for a while, and it's already state law. If we had an application submitted today under these parameters, we wouldn't have, we would have very few standards. We have a lot of design guidelines because our specific plans, we purposely did this. We created specific plans that had guidelines and allowed designers flexibility. And we were able to go through architectural review and sort of figure it out. And I think we've done it in an expedition, you know, in expedited manner. But we've now, under state law, lost that opportunity and many jurisdictions in California have. So it's not quite an ADU checklist where they're actually specifying the standards for us. They're allowing us to create our objective design standards, but just this is our future. This is our future with housing construction. So I just wanted to have those just summary comments for you.
Yes, I feel the same way. Okay, any questions for Fernanda, the commissioners?
I have one. Fernanda, I know you you went through the city council, the city's attorneys, I should say, regarding other standards within other codes, but did those same attorneys look at case law? We all know that people fight over views, and I know that there are many cases in California regarding views. Did they examine those cases and give you any input?
They were not aware of any cases where a objective view sharing standard was being challenged. They they know of many subjective, you know, discretionary reviews that where views were of legal concern, but nothing with that was relating to objective standards.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan.
Hi.
I got a couple of comments. In one of the, one of the, the open space paragraphs, it referred to cement. My guess is that should be, that should be concrete.
Yeah, cement isn't that you took the concrete.
It's something, something that you couldn't get away with in my school, but anyway. And and again, I see that the the new standard for setback on on a corner is twelve feet. And I think that I think it was seven at one point. Is there, what's the reason for that change?
Fernanda, could you explain that? It is seven feet, isn't it?
To the corner.
Yes, the setback for a street cor, a building at a street corner is seven feet from the from the property corner to the building. The twelve foot setback is only applies to third stories.
Ah, okay. That's where I missed it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? Yes.
I did look into the the view sharing issue after a discussion with Ken. I got with Google. And there is a three D modeling mechanism that can be used to calculate view share. San Francisco has it. I don't know how complicated or how expensive it is to do it. I'd assume you have some type of LiDAR measurement with these laser to map out the the city. But that would be the only mechanism that they knew of that would provide a mathematical mechanism where you could say forty percent view sharing. If it's more than that, it would be yes or no. Whether the city wants to spend the money to do that or not would be the question. But there is a technology out there to do it.
That's interesting. Thank you, Bob. Shouldn't it be noted that Bob did listen to all the tapes and?
Yeah, I can make a statement for the record. I did review the meeting agenda, notes and minutes, public comments, and watched the meeting recordings for the eleven November eighth, the December thirteenth and the January twenty fourth planning commission meetings.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay, then.
No, no, not yet.
I'll be happy to speak a little bit about the Dan and my and Fernanda's meetings and and Fernanda did a great presentation. Attachment three has the red strikeouts and additives that shows exactly point by point, all the things we discussed. There are several controversial points, the the twelve foot setback on lighthouse being one, I'm sure we will hear about from the public. And staff had thought, well, maybe we'll bring that number down to a seven foot third story setback, trying to increase the amount of housing that's available on the third floors along Lighthouse. And but we, after some discussion, we, you know, especially Dan, who has been very involved in in design issues down on that street, thought that the twelve feet was really a more appropriate number for the the basic issue of bulk and mass as appreciated from people using Lighthouse Avenue. Would you say that's?
Yeah.
So we stuck with the twelve foot thing instead of going to seven feet. The reality of it is, and I don't mean to be cynical, but with the Monterey two thousand thirty one program roaring down our necks, but this all may be, you know, this all might change before the year is out anyway. Because I know there there's going to be a lot of people wanting fairness in in upzoning around the city. And it can't just be on Fremont, you know, share the pain. So I can't guarantee after all this discussion, what this twelve foot thing is actually going to mean. It's just as likely to go away, actually, I think. But who who knows? I think for the benefit of this discussion and and as we've discussed it in terms of the long history of of the lighthouse residents, that's an important issue to them. And it's, it seems like they have a very good rationale for it. So we stuck with the the twelve foot thing. The twelve foot setback from the property line on Lighthouse. And we went over a lot of other issues, all the little courtyard and the corners. And I think in the end, the 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 strikeouts you'll see on on the attachment three are pretty reasonable compromise in all cases. And it stopped me if anybody wants, you know, we still have to hear from the public. The I I think Fernanda did a good job of highlighting the two issues that we thought the full commission needs to discuss, which are tree removal issues and the the view sharing issue. So those are, those really are difficult ones. I just had a a project recently in Monterey County where they just have a prohibition in their zoning ordinance against removing what they call landmark trees. You're just, you know, maybe there's some way of going through, but they certainly don't have this language about what's reasonable development and what isn't. It's just they consider trees over twenty four inch diameter that are protected in a given zone as being landmarked and prohibited from being removed. So I'm not saying Monterey County is going to be our great guiding light here. But it's another example of a a a part of the ordinance about tree removal that has been very lovingly sort of crafted over the decades. And now we're just throwing it out with the bathwater in a sense here. So I think the the commission just needs to talk about the, you know, any ideas or insights they might have into these, you know, right now, we're talking about downtown and lighthouse area plans, and we're going to talk about it more and other plans, but it's going to come up in every zone. So and then the view sharing thing is also worthy of discussion because it's a, it's a very difficult legal thing. I mean, just from Fernanda's telling it, talking to the city attorney about how to craft objective language about this issue. That was interesting, Bob's comment about the, you know, using computer programs. So the, you know, the Fernanda's presentation was accurate, and those two issues we should talk about.
Thank you, Terry. I I have some comments, but I'm going to wait until we bring them back to commissioners.
Okay.
So let's open up the public hearing on this, and I see Sharon's back there. Why don't we start with Sharon's comments and go from there?
And we do have a hand raised online.
Okay, great. Let's know.
Thank you, Sharon Dwight. I assume all of you got a copy of the letter that I got fired up. Thank you. So since I've got three minutes, I'm going to sprint, and I hope you had a chance to read it. I hope you will consider it. I've got very few points that I'm going to talk about because I know I'll run out of time. First of all, the the amendments to the specific plan by adding the utility major for water and also the massage establishments. First of all, for the water, it isn't just about, gee, let's have water. It's about how do you handle the water? And it's the pumping, and it is an industrial installation. It doesn't belong in a residential area, and we're trying to build a really attractive mixed use neighborhood here. And I mean, it isn't just a commercial zone where you're going to stick it in. So it doesn't, it doesn't fit. And we're saying it doesn't fit on Alvarado. And I'm here to say it doesn't fit on Lighthouse and Foam either. There are other locations, Wave Street perhaps. But these two streets, we're trying to make it walkable residential. We say that it's not compatible on Alvarado, and I say to you, it is not compatible. We say that it it's not compatible in on Alvarado and I say to you, it is not compatible on Lighthouse and Foam. Similarly, for the massage uh in the establishments, we talked long and hard at our meetings when we were talking specific plans, saying we were getting so many vape shops and uh tattoos, marijuana related uh adult clothing. We were saying, we gotta cap this off. It's going to affect the total impression of what our neighborhood serving commercial district is. We've been unsuccessful in setting an upper limit of how many. This was no accident that we didn't have massage parlors included. It was not an accident. It wasn't an oversight. We didn't want it. It doesn't belong. It doesn't belong on Alvarado. It doesn't belong on Lighthouse Foam. So those two. Uh, three story requirements on lighthouse is another point. Uh, three story setbacks, hallelujah. Yes, go with it. Uh, we have three requirements, public art and public open space. Those have been dropped. They should be required if they want to have three story. It was mandated. We can put it in there. Either they have provided it or they haven't. That is measurable. Yes or no? So it needs to be in there. Uh likewise, resident and employee parking plan. Either they have one or they haven't. And on lighthouse, we've got to have that. It is, there's nothing in this language that it that says they will have a plan. They need one. And finally, for the open space, there's the the phrase that's been added, except fronting lighthouse. There are at least three houses that I can think of on lighthouse. If they were to add additional units and they wanted to keep that the the front yard. This language makes me ask, is it open space? Is it lot coverage? This really calls into question how you even measure it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Hey, Jennifer, we have someone online?
Yes, there is one hand raised, but just in case there are more viewers who want to join. The number to join by telephone is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. And the webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Please either use the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And for the phone number, the last three digits, seven, six, three, you should be able to unmute. And please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
Hi, my name is Nancy Soulay and I live in Old Town. And I am going to speak first just on the most important uh point that I have, but I have a couple other to add if there's time. Um, and it has to do with parking. The paragraph there, this um only refers to in the lighthouse specific plan. It's proposed that parking may be shared with an offsite parking facility located more than one half mile from the building entrance. And of course, that's with discretionary approval. It did not mention the downtown specific plan. And I wanted to specifically tell you how important I feel it is that there is parking to be provided for the residents and employees, if it's a a commercial kind of thing like you were just, like Sharon Dwight was just talking about. Um, it to not have the parking there is so unreasonable to expect people to go up to a half a mile away to get from where they parked their car and perhaps lugging home their toddler in one hand or in in a stroller or a baby with a diaper bag and with the groceries and with the with a big box of diapers that they might be needing. It's it's just incomprehensible that you wouldn't have some parking that is close by for the residents to be able to use. Um, so that is my wonder one, my number one concern and I do, and I think you should address downtown and say that it cannot be a a the half mile away being considered reasonable to be providing for a residential use. It it needs to be there with the property that's being built. Um, so please address it and please do not allow it to be only um considered satisfied with a a half mile away facility to parking. So that's number one. Number two, um regarding those trees, we're trying so hard to make our projects and and provide some uh housing that's needed to then have to also have very large trees that could be, if taken away, replaced with smaller, more appropriate trees, particularly because the lot is now usually becoming more packed, more condensed. Um, the lot coverage is more used, so don't put, don't require that they have to replace a huge tree and three for one into a project that we're already trying to squeeze parking and more units into, et cetera. So consider that we're all trying to compromise to make this this work and don't, I I just don't see that that's an important thing to um hang on. Um, I would like you to clarify, please, upzoning. I believe you mean more density. And that is also a big concern to Old Town and the areas of downtown that are adjacent to Old Town because we have such a lack of parking within Old Town because much of the lower streets are already impacted by having uh several units. Uh, two or three probably is the average in many of the streets in lower Old Town. So to not have additional uh to to not address that, it it it's very important.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more hand raised.
Okay.
Pat McNeil, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, I uh, my name is Pat McNeil. I'm a resident. Um, I would just like to comment that if I read the um the uh, the ord- the 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 ordinance proposals correctly, I understood that parking would be uh people who lived, who people who chose to live in newly developed areas would not have access to a residential parking sticker. And I think that's totally appropriate. I think that when people move into um high-rise buildings in New York or in San Francisco or in Seattle or in LA, there is no expectation that the first five floors are going to belong to Detroit or Toyota or Mercedes. The idea is that people want to live in the city and they're going to use the facilities of that city for mobility. And so I I'm just totally frustrated with the idea that 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 we need to leave ourselves hostage to the automobile. A small city needs to grow in the way that a small city can. And that is to provide decent housing for people, a decent business space, but not necessarily unlimited parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Jennifer?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, without, we will bring it back to commissioners for discussion. This has been such a disturbing experience for me. And I had to ask myself, why am I so disturbed by this punitive things that are happening to us because we weren't able to hit our housing goals? And I guess what it is for me is I'm I'm truly invested in a discretionary approval process. I mean, when I came here back in nineteen eighty-one, right out of college, I think I sat on architectural board for the city of Seaside and sat on a committee that wrote those design standards, residential design standards. And then I was in Pacific Grove on on ARB and planning commission and helped write, chaired one committee to write the residential design standards and historic preservation standards. And I'm here. And I believe in the process that we've been going through, it's yielded a beautiful community and I'm disturbed by objective design standards. So when I, when we were reviewing them with Fernanda, I kept thinking as an architect, and if I was working for someone who wasn't really enthusiastic about doing a nice job, what would these standards give us? And it's frightening to think about from from an architectural standpoint. Um, so what I'm going to say to you is we consider what we're reviewing here in these objective design standards. I think we have to look at them as we're going to give it our best shot, but we're not going to get it all right. You know, there's hopefully opportunities if something's not quite working that we can bring it back and revisit it and revise the standard. I don't know how easy that's going to be, but but it 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 did occur to me that there's just no way we're going to come up with absolute bulletproof, yields us the best situation. Set of objective standards tonight or next month. We have to see how it works as projects come through. And so keep that in mind um as we deliberate this. We we we'll make ourselves crazy like Terry and I did when we were working with Fernanda. Because every time we'd start to go in a direction that we felt was appropriate, it was turning into something more subjective and less objective. And it's a challenge. I'm just saying it's a real challenge. And I'm I'm fearful for what's coming down the line for us because this is just the beginning. So having said that, um, we could start our discussion. It'd be great. See what we can do with this.
Well, I think that one of the problems that we have is that we are trying to add density to two of our areas that are already dense, which would be Old Town and the lighthouse. And so to convert existing property into a higher density situation is very difficult, compare and contrast to North Fremont, which has been a visitor accommodation thoroughfare and uh appears to be un- un- not enough population of buildings. Uh, it allows for new buildings to be constructed and to create density where it doesn't exist now. And I compare this to two developments in Menlo Park and Redwood City where they completely raised automobile agencies and some other buildings and started from scratch to create these three story apartment buildings where they have residential on the first floor with open space entries and obvious rules that they follow to create something quite attractive that is virtually next to the street. Walk into your front door, you know, four or five feet from the street. So that's easy. Tear it all down and build it all back up again, but we're trying to incorporate these sets of standards into two areas in particular that are already dense. And in reading through what has been suggested, I think it's a good job. I think that what Fernanda and Terry and uh Dan have done to sort of edit what has already been a good foundation is a good job. Um, a thing about the parking and the trees, I'd love to hear the discussion. I'm not sure I even have an opinion on that.
Anybody else? I'm Mike.
Okay, I'll step in. First of all, I come from a background where we always had to be objective and had to write objective standards. Because subjective would not cover the actions of people. Hold people accountable otherwise. I, first of all, I wanted to compliment the the trio here that did this writing. When I went through it, I was, I was just kept nodding my head because it made sense. Uh, so to all three of you, I I give my sincere thank you. Two issues that do come up. Number one is parking. And so many of these projects have come before this planning commission. I shake my head because we're forgetting that there are so many lots on every block. And there are typically more vehicles than there are lots. Not to mention, the state of California is now mandating that we cannot take that into consideration in this development. So we're stuck. And I remember two city engine, two city traffic engineers ago, when he left, he commented that the biggest problem Monterey is going to have is parking. So he was a prophecy that is raising its ugly head. I think that we're going to have to figure out how we can stop from becoming a block in San Francisco. People drive around the block for an hour trying to find a parking place. I don't see the city of Monterey putting in parking garages within a half mile of any particular spot in the in the city. I live on in the the north end here and we don't have any of those parking lot. And I don't see the city building them in the near future. They're very expensive. And it it's just, it's a dream. But we're not going to see it for for a while. The second issue I see is that we need to keep plugging at this issue of standards. I'm sure the rest of the city is going to go through it. And we're going to come to light, but I think we need to keep an eye out for a commonality of issues. What are the same issues in every neighborhood to help us focus on finding the solutions that we need? I also agree that we're going to keep working, working at this and it's not going to be, we need to have a tool that will allow us to be a little bit more subjective in the design. I I agree with Dan. I mean, I don't want to see cookie cutter houses and buildings that are all right next to each other. How do you put that into an objective standard? I don't know, maybe an asterisk at the bottom. That we need to maintain individual design standards of a neighborhood. We need to maintain. I'm an amateur historian and I read this description of a man who came to Monterey when we still had a Mexican governor here. He says, as I came in to the pueblo, the little pueblo is what he described it, with white buildings and red roofs overlooking a shining bay. I think that in a lot of people's eye, when they come to Monterey, that's part of what they're hoping to see. They see parts of it when we still have some of these historic buildings. We still have the bay. Haven't changed that yet. But I think that we need to try to maintain the individual character of our city as we work through these problems because the state is not going to give us any slack. To maintain, and I I also agree with with what Fernanda said, that we're trying to meet the the uh some objective standards as much as possible. My two cents. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd also like to um pass on my appreciation for the work that you guys have done. I think that's going to be the baseline for all the future um plans that we're going to have to put together. So it's a good building block to have that under the belt for this. Um, I think I am concerned with the the view sharing. It was an issue that I always felt on ARC that was a tough call when you had to take away somebody's view because it seemed that you know, other property owner had a right to put a second floor on or a second additional construction that would block the view. Um, maybe one thing that we could consider here is that would be a binary. If it blocks anybody's view completely, we'd just forbid it. Um, I think I would have always voted against something that did that as an ARC member, but but we never had that happen. Maybe that would be an initial step into trying to get our hands around that because so many people really do value what they ended up um buying and we have a good view at our house and I would hate to see it go away. But you know, I don't know how you in some way make that objective. Um, it is a subjective call when we were on ARC. And I would look at the issues that you're wrestling with here on this particular um issue the same way. Um, so I think for at least view sharing, if you take somebody's view away completely, maybe that's something that we could say we don't like. And we shouldn't allow. Um, for the trees, I think I like our old, you know, trees. There are some houses that have big redwoods in front of them. And I think anything we could do to protect those would be wonderful. Maybe it is a certain diameter of a tree. And if it reaches that diameter.
And if it reaches that diameter, then we just have only a process that lets us go through A R C or back to planning commission for permission to remove it, to protect it otherwise.
Mike Boss.
Did somebody, did somebody call my name?
Yes, I did.
I should, I should say that I used to live in Old Town. And in a view was very important to me because, you know, our kitchen looked out over over the city and and I had a great view of the airport. Most people wouldn't like to have an airport view, but that's how I started my career is designing airplanes. So I really like that to watch the planes come and go. And parking, parking was at a premium along Monroe Street, just around the corner from Bob's house. There were, there were several apartment owners down the block who refused to allow the people to park in the parking lot at the apartment house. And so those people would of necessity be parking on Monroe Street, which would in some, in some cases would prevent me from parking by my own house. And that was, that was infuriating. So the the parking, the parking thing is 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 rampant in in Old Town. In the, in where I live now, I mean, it's it's kind of rare to see a car parked on the street all night. And so that's, that's a whole different story.
What's interesting about parking, in there are a lot of neighborhoods that are impacted by parking for various different reasons. But they're impacted. And, you know, we've gone to a lot of trouble to create transit corridors and and chain and specific plans out on North Fremont and, you know, Lighthouse. In in the hopes that we're moving beyond the car. And, you know, at what point do you make a serious commitment to that? And I think as these issues come up like this right now, that's something you have to think about. You know, when you look at, when I look at it, I look at it through my eyes. You know, I couldn't wait to get my license. Well, kids these days, they're not getting their their attitude towards how they move around is is much different than what ours is. And I think when, you know, on the one issue of parking, as it pertains to what we're doing tonight, I mean, we should really look at it. It's like, what is it? What kind of future are we trying to create? We've made this commitment. Are we gonna stick with it? Are we gonna start making decisions that ultimately get us where we wanted to go originally with these things? So it it's an opportunity, but once again, to reinforce our commitment to these transit corridors that we worked so hard to create.
So do you think that a building, a new building should have a parking plan?
Well, listen, I live in an impacted parking area. It is a pain in the ass. But I also, I also feel like I need to be committed to the future. I mean, that's what it's all about, right? And, yeah, I guess I I mean, Kim, how many plans have we done around transit corridors?
I mean, projects, I think.
How many specific plans have we altered?
Oh, so all of the, I mean, the the basis of the specific plans were to move to transit oriented development. I I don't think it's a surprise to anyone. Our transportation network was predicted in our general plan in two thousand and three to basically reach capacity. And I think we see that along a lot of arterial and especially with the new housing growth that's expected. There's, we're going to have to make that change. I mean, I I really foresee that we're gonna have to to, if we wanna move more expeditiously, you're gonna have to be in a bus or you're gonna have to be riding your bike. And the more we can get our population to convert to that, the better. Is it gonna happen? I don't know. But it's, the other thing that we haven't talked about, if you really, uh, so there was a new law passed called, I believe it's called S P six, that's going to prevent parking requirements for residential development in commercial districts. I need to go back and I I haven't read it in total. It goes into effect in June. And so my guess is this is the future of, you know, if we want to do infill in certain areas that we're, we're probably not going to even have any parking requirements. I I need to read the legislation, but that's definitely where the state's going. The analogy that's used a lot at conferences is if you take your typical twenty by ten parking space, which is two hundred square feet, and you take the drive aisle, which is usually twenty-four feet for backup, you take a percentage of that, you know, that equates to a small living unit. And then if you, if a community was able to take, you know, a lot of their parking lots and convert it into housing, then, you know, we might not have the housing problems we have today. There's a lot of assumptions in that. And I think it does underestimate the mom that you're the family and, okay, you've got to get the kids to school and then you've got to get to daycare and then you, you know, you've got to do four trips before. It's not a simple bus ride into work for a lot of people. So I will say changing the parking requirements is I don't, and by the way, I don't think just saying a resident, provide a residential parking plan is an objective standard. What do we measure it against? You know, what do, how do we evaluate that? But so I'm I'm concerned about that. I don't think it's going to meet an objective standard anymore.
Particularly when you have a tourist town where you're inviting people from other places to come. And trying to maintain that tourism industry with the employees that are necessary. I agree with you. I don't know where it's gonna go.
Well, it doesn't seem to end with the state of California. I'm telling you. We got it. We gotta get out in front of this and stay out in front of it is.
I mean, one of the things that Dan said that's that Fernanda and Dan and I all reached the conclusion was the best we're gonna do is have like a snapshot of of the city's, city's intentions about these two districts right now, because the ground is moving under our feet. And we'll try to do the best job we can with these two documents and try to have a reasonable thing. And but that's the best we're gonna do. We're not gonna be able to nail everything. It's just the whole parking thing. It's, somebody else said, what we're basically doing is starting to set zoning rules anticipating parking in ten years. Quite there, yeah.
Didn't you say that?
No, I just did right now. But you see what I'm saying is, is some of the parking stuff is forward looking. And I happen to believe that it's probably where it is going. It was interesting, California lost happy million people last year, but that doesn't help our situation. But I I I do have a couple of questions, as long as Kim jumped in there. So this water pumping thing, has that been there all along? Or is that, did that just appear on this?
So in the C two zoning district, we had utilities major. And so you could apply to build a well in any of our commercial districts. When we transferred to the specific plans, we didn't even discuss it, to be honest. We just, it, we didn't include it in the use classifications. So in the downtown, we have a property owner that wants to build a well to support two, two projects that they are envisioning. And the question was, should we allow that process to happen again? And the more we thought about it, I mean, because we have approved wells, the Iris Canyon housing development is on wells. And there's a project on Garden Road that is it was always in our zoning, but it was eliminated with the specific plans without really a discussion. So we have a developer in downtown that actually they've done their test well. They're, and that's where, you know, they they have to get a report on the quantity and quality of water to see if it will support the proposed development.
But did this pumping, did this just appear in this new addition? Or was this already there in the previous ones and?
No, it wasn't in the previous.
Recently appeared.
We, we added it back based on a developer talking to us that they saw that as a viable water supply for housing. And they're, they're looking at trying to do that. I had another gentleman. And I'll just say this where I think these discussions are gonna go, depending on how long contact me regarding Garden Road, talking about doing a, what did he call it? A package plant? And he was surprised nobody had asked where you take all the wastewater on site and you actually create your own sewage treatment plant? And then re and clarify the water and repump it into the building. Because he was interested in getting more units. And so the longer it takes to get a water supply project, either through pure Monterey or D cell, which seems like the only two viable real options. We know the one option that is fastest is three years away. The other one's probably even further away. And so, you know, if this community is unable to deliver water for new development, then should we be looking at? I I was really interested in this package plant concept, you know, if you, could you put, could you build it, put it in a basement, soundproof it, make it so, and then, you know, basically create your own.
Right, quite an industrial thing to do in a, in a lot of zones, though.
Yeah, but you know, the question is, could it be done? I'm not sure it can't be done and not be silent with the right, I'm sort of of the mind that with the right soundproofing and the right construction method, and if it's worth it for the number of units, it might be an alternative.
Doesn't Calamon the watershed?
No, so they, they don't. They own the, the system. They own the, the actual pipes.
So water rights go with the land.
Water rights go with the land. And so the water rights, we, we've permitted them. The process is they go to Monterey County Health Department. They get a test well permit. The, and then Monterey County Health, like on Iris Canyon, said they require duplicity of water. They required three wells for that site. Several hundred units there. And then they required quality and quantity testing. We then brought that to the planning commission as part of a use permit. You saw the layout. The planning commission ultimately approved that. And then it goes to the water district for a distribution. I think it's called the distribution permit. And then it goes back to Monterey County Health to certify everything at the end. So there is there, yeah, I mean, we have done it. We've been trying to think outside the, I mean, so how are we gonna get to housing development? You know, is, if it takes eight years for the water supply projects to come on, ten years, should we be exploring these options? I don't know.
I, I don't mean to digress, but has anybody been to the San City water plant? They have a D cell plant in San City. And it's in, it's just in this industrial building and it is so spiffy. It's just this beautiful clean thing. They're just drawing the water out of the sand. And I don't know how they ever got the permits for it, but it's, you know, it's nowhere big enough for.
I was at the meeting when they got the permit.
Yeah, well, it's, it's interesting how that's, that's an example of a, of, you know, somebody who got a, a water solution through. And it's, it's still giving them water years later. Of course, they don't have the big population, bigger population that we do.
I toured a while ago, Santa Barbara built their own D cell plant.
So that was, so the water pumping was one. The half mile to parking, where did that half mile thing come from?
So that's a pretty accepted planning standard.
Right.
It's called a walk shed and
You see the A D U rules.
And you, yeah, and you see it all sorts of places in planning documents. It's considered a reasonable distance to walk. And I, I mean, maybe we should all go out and walk a half mile on a downtown street or measure it out. I it's, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it's a reasonable walk shed as a planner.
When it's raining.
If we're gonna dense, I mean, how are we gonna do this?
Well, I love Nancy's talk of the poor woman with her babies in her diapers and mile with all these things.
So, but we also have the O C O Affordable Housing Project above the, the old movie theaters.
Yes.
Right.
And we've got, I think, almost forty units up there. We have the Monterey Hotel Project next door, an affordable housing project, nineteen affordable units, no parking on site.
Yep.
So.
Big city kind of, uh, no parking projects.
And isn't the apartment building above Detroit Market also a low to medium income apartment building?
Not that I'm aware of. The other project we did was where she, above Chibos, we took the old nightclub. There's thirty-three apartments up there. Twenty percent are low, low and moderate income and they have no parking. So I, I do think it can work in urban environments. I think it's very different for um, single family use, what that is. You know, so spread out.
All those diapers.
No, well, you can walk the, I guess you can't get them at Trader Joe's.
Okay, so then the, so I'm just, I'm just sort of, so there are four items I see here as sticking in the collective craw. I think most of this document, I think we're pretty close on. So the, the, the pumping, the half mile to
Parking.
Parking, you make a very good case for that. The tree removal and the view sharing. The, the tree removal, Bob made a good point is, is the would, would setting a, we're, we're going kind of backwards against everything else we're talking about and actually setting a prohibition against landmark tree removal, is that possible? Or is that crazy to even discuss?
Ask Carmel.
What do they have?
They aren't here.
Well, one thing about the county is they have a lot more trees than the city does in general.
Yeah, they have, they've tried to codify a lot of environmental stuff in the county, yes.
And get to Sharon's last point, the massage establishment pro- prohibition on Lighthouse to mirror that on Avrato.
Right.
There was, that was, you've covered all of them except for that one.
Yeah, that's true. So the massage thing, which we didn't really go over too much, you know, it was one of those sort of stealth issues, Dan, that we didn't really dwell on.
It's not exactly agriculture.
Right. So there we have five issues, the water pumping, half mile parking, tree removal, view sharing and massage. Rest of it, we kind of have a pretty good handle on, I think. And until Monterey two, two thousand and thirty-one sweeps in, then, then we're all gonna go jump into the bay, I guess.
It's gonna come to us.
It is on the way. So, yeah, so Kim makes a good case for half mile parking. I mean, both sides have, have strong arguments, but, but
I like it.
What is, so you, what is the committee's sense about that?
Which one?
The half mile to parking standard.
Well, I lived on Larkin Street when I initially moved here, before I moved to Jefferson and you know, I think Kim's right. I mean, you, you just walk when you need to. If you can't find a parking spot, you're gonna walk. I mean, it's just gonna be an inconvenience. It's part of your routine. If you look at Watson, Larkin, Monroe, Van Buren, a lot of them are always packed. I mean, and if you look at the neighborhoods, I think you see the future of dense housing. Every house has a apartment complex in its backyard and that. So, you know, I think there's nothing you can do that may persuade people to start, you know, maybe dumping their cars.
If you wanna see models that, once you get to San Francisco, San Jose, you're gonna see that when people get out of their cars. No, they have to find a place to park their car. Find it. And that's, so that, next thing you come out and say, where did I park my car? It is, it is so frustrating to do that in San Francisco. I, I, I just never vision envisioned it here as a thing when I was young, but it's coming.
Well, it's already, it's already here on, on Spaghetti Hill. I mean, I know people that, you know, just live down on Larkin. They have a really hard time finding a place to park. It's just part of the, what they accept. And I think if Ken's right and there's gonna be a new on law limiting parking, then we just need to be objective about trying to find solutions that mitigate it to whatever extent we can.
Okay, well, I'm, I'll go along with the half mile thing too then, I guess. We haven't, uh, don't worry, we haven't voted on it yet. What about the, what about the tree removal? Any um are we just gonna leave? I, I can't tell here if, uh, if um Fernandez actually see where on, well, nobody has this, but the um, your number two here. It's just basically uh, a tree replacement.
Well, we haven't been enforcing anything like that in the city. We've lost thousands. With no requirement to replace them. I've lost, in this last year, I've lost, I think, five large oaks within three blocks of my house.
Yeah, but lost because of a storm or if they died or?
Lost. It made a difference. You look at, I think the city's lost somewhere on ten thousand trees in the last ten years.
Somebody just came along and whacked them all down?
Yes.
It, what we're talking about here is to development.
We have businesses, we, we have one street that's called Stumps Row. Because they have, the villages are still there, but trees that come down are never replaced.
I think we ought to put in a tree protection measure. The whole thing that this is about is trying to create standards that work for our community and not to let the state of California dictate what works for our community. And so that, the tree protection, I really think should be left in. So twenty-four inches and above.
So not reasonable or unreasonable, it's just prohib- prohibition?
Well, I don't see the language, but I, some kind of protective statement about the trees, I think, gives us uh, some leverage for the time being. You know, for the time being.
So how's the flexibility gonna be provided in that? The development proposal comes forth? That it makes a lot of sense to remove that twenty-four inch tree?
Who are they gonna apply to to take it out?
Well, I don't even know if they can. So Fernando, what's your thoughts about that? So right now, they would go through architectural review and the architectural review committee balances tree removals with tree replacements. And this is really hard for me, is there a lot of projects that remove?
Yeah, uh, my understanding is that you can't create an objective standard that is gonna preclude development. So by prohibiting removal of a tree that's like in the middle of the lot. Some people could argue that that would preclude the development from happening.
I'm gonna really miss our discretionary review process. I really feel like this makes it way harder than it's been historically. Where reasonable arguments or discussion could go in front of the architectural review committee and I'll just have to say things sort of make sense at the end of the day.
And Fernando, this is, this, this uh thing about the trees was something you spoke specifically with the city attorney about.
The trees? Sorry, did you say?
Well, the, this, this, uh, this number two, you know, in, in your um discussion here about um, basically, it's, it's, I'm not sure what this number two is. It's, it's a, it's a discussion point for the planning commission. Uh, it's not
Yes.
Language isn't meant to be part of the, the new um, uh, you know, uh, area plans.
Uh, that, the standard that I put in quotes is currently in the exhibit as a objective, as a proposed objective standard.
Okay.
Yes, it's currently there. We did have our legal counsel review it and they thought that by having a replacement ra- ratio, um, you wouldn't preclude the development from happening, but, and that it was a reasonable standard and that it was it would be understood by all parties. But we did not discuss landmark trees. This, this standard applies to all trees.
Right, and the city doesn't have anything in the ordinance that discusses the landmark tree.
Oh, we do. We have a special process for designation of landmark trees. It's, I believe voluntary. And there's a handful of city trees that have been, I think the one behind City Hall here in front of the rec center that's five feet is a landmark tree. So there is a process in the ordinance for landmark trees.
Can we incorporate that into these area plans? Or are they already there pretty much?
I think what Fernando and the city attorney came up with is this replacement thing is concrete. You know, you take a tree out, you put three, three back in. And uh, you know, then that you're not, it's not a beauty contest and whether this tree is, you know.
Kim, would it be too subjective to put in goals and objectives?
Yep, it's too subjective. So, and I do wanna point out, we've worked with outside legal counsel on this because it's required so much review. So um, I know we've used the word city attorney, but um, she's very well aware of what we've been doing with our outside legal counsel, but Adam Lindgren with Myers Knopf, who attended some of our meetings, has been um representing us.
Where, where is the zoning ordinance? Is that landmark tree thing?
So we have a tree ordinance that's separated tree, that's separated from, and so it guides a lot of the city forester work.
Right.
And then there's two or three policies that apply to um planning applications. It basically says that any tree, I think it's over four inches in diameter, shall be shown on site plans. And that it goes to the architectural review committee or certain types of applications and it's considered as part of the development proposal. And they're given the ability to weigh the pros and cons. And then the recommended tree replacement, if I remember, this is three to one in ordinance, but not on all cases have, like, in the old days, Robert Reed would come out and say, yeah, I don't want three trees on this site because it's gonna crowd this. I want a one tree that's of this species and this size. Um, so the ordinance gave him flexibility, our forester, if they had a strong recommendation to make that to the architectural review committee, which has worked really well for us. So it's just
Does that tree ordinance have effect then in these two areas?
The landmark ordinance, I would think, it, but it's a voluntary process to designate a landmark tree.
Oh, the property owner has to do it?
They have to come forward and nominate it to the city, sort of like a historic resource. Like, I wanna designate my tree as a landmark.
Right.
And the city, as I understand, is committed to certain obligations regarding a heritage landmark tree.
Well, if that ordinance is still then should that not be?
So I don't think it, I mean, we're gonna have to come up with a prescriptive standard. If we allow removal, it'll have to be replaced three to one.
Okay.
We're gonna have to have a detailed standard. And what you've been discussing is can you prohibit the removal of the tree? And I don't know. I mean, we could go back and ask that.
Well, maybe that could be a follow-up um for revision to the plan. You know, don't stop it um on that account, but maybe provide some suggestions, like maybe the landmark trees. We look at changing that ordinance so we can then um, maybe go through a process where we can say it's a landmark tree without having the property owner being involved. And then if the lawyers are okay with it, landmark trees can't be removed. I can think of a few, like Mr. Singh's old house. There's that beautiful monkey puzzle tree and the um, house next to it on Watson has a big gigantic redwood. So it wouldn't be a lot of trees, but I can see somebody wanting to Mr. Singh's lot if they ended up spying it in the current family house. Gets rid of it and wants to put a whole bunch of houses, you know, there and just cut that tree. You know, but I think that's an item for a future discussion, not something that um should hold this up now.
I agree. I agree. I think we need to move this along. On last nits. Because you know, in total.
Yeah, I think it's a great building block for where to move next for all the different plans that are coming up, so.
Uh, I think it, one of the, the difficulty things are moving so fast that we're gonna be overcome by.
I agree. I mean, this thing you've mentioned tonight about parking, you know, it's like every time we come in here, you you, I hear SB, something come out of your mouth. I'm going like, what is it now?
Yeah, we're literally just, we're just trying to get through ADUs and we're just about there to come in compliance. We wanna come in compliance with SB thirty-five. It's only gonna be two of our areas. There's more we need to do. Um, and then there's SB six that we've got to deal with. And then the housing element work is saying, anyways, the background report we're getting shows that there's probably another seven to eight ordinances that will need to be amended. Just, and that doesn't even consider the re-ownings we're gonna have to do for the three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four house. So um we, you, you are gonna be busy. You as the planning commission, um yeah, I know.
Well, you know, everybody gives us all this credit for these documents, but you know, the truth is that you
Fernando.
Are doing the brunt of the work and the graphs on it.
So, anybody wanna take a stab at a motion?
I mean, let's suggest that we need to have something in place. Even if it's a workaround. A marker in place to give the staff something to rely on. If we don't have anything, remember, stick it ourselves.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree with you. That's, that's why I feel um
Mike is very similar.
Mike, you're also muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Your mute is a
A little closer to their microphone.
There you go. We can hear you now.
Could everyone get closer to their microphone because I can't hear a darn thing over here?
Okay.
Okay.
How's that?
That's much better.
Great.
I think that's the twenty-eighth.
Is it the twenty-eighth?
Okay, so with that in mind, that um, this is going to be a document that's probably gonna be revisited. And it's not gonna be perfect, but it's gonna be as close to perfect as we can get it with what we have right now. Terry Sandy, when you write like sideways like that, right there, you always come up with the good. I've seen it before.
Yeah, so there might be a motion in that sideways writing.
That's what I'm thinking.
In your opinion, should a motion be a simple approval? Or should it address the five things that may develop into amendment?
It seems like to me like on some of the five that we've already kind of standing on, I, I don't think we discussed uh, the view sharing aspect of it. I, I don't even know what can be done about that.
So the five were the parking and the half mile. The
Trees.
Pumping.
The water storage. The trees, the tree ordinance, the view sharing and the massage establishment prohibition on Alvarado, but not on Lighthouse. And that seems like a smaller issue than the other four, but uh, the revisit, I thi- I think we won't revisit parking, let it go.
Did someone, did someone add the massage um paragraph to the, to the uh, um, uh, Lighthouse?
We, we haven't really addressed that one.
Yeah, well, I think it's something that needs to be adjusted. Let me say this.
My experience with massage parlors on a professional level is that they tend to gravitate to where they're seen less than downtowns. They typically go into the, the outskirts. And that's always been a concern for the city. They have pretty stringent requirements for massage parlors. But I, I agree, there's some roads that we probably objectively say, we don't think they belong here.
But is that something that should be part of this? Or is that a different issue on its own? I think it might be a different issue on its own and maybe bring back, ask staff to come back with a um, recommendation for.
I'll just be, I, I think for me, massage is fairly straightforward. If the commission wants to prohibit it on Lighthouse Avenue, we can not list it as an allowed use.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think that's straightforward and something we can achieve in this amendment.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
Parking is hard.
How many?
Okay.
So do you want to, I guess, just the pulse of the commission? Do you wanna prohibit new on, um, like, right now, we have businesses facing Alvarado Street? On businesses facing Lighthouse Avenue, you wanna see that use as not an allowed use?
I, I'll go along with that.
Yeah.
Can you address foam too? Foam Street? Cause the, or the proposed uh, resolution includes foam street as allowing massage uses.
It gets difficult when you start excluding old streets.
Yeah, there may already be some on Foam Street.
There's some on Lighthouse as well.
Oh, so they're already, so they get grandfathered in? Right.
Well, I think that qualifying Alvarado and Lighthouse as the main streets of those districts is probably the better bet and letting foam go, but that's just my
I, I would agree with you. Yeah. So we're down to
Try a motion?
Well, let me, um, oh yeah, please, please do. But let me mention one thing before you do. Cause uh, Fernando has on this, sort of in the middle of her um, presentation here, there's the one and two. And they, she actually has exact language in quotations of, of what she's suggesting that we put in there. Uh, the first one reviewing view um, sharing says uh, development projects shall consider new Monterey residential views. If there are view impacts, the view should be shared between properties when feasible.
So that one, um, to clarify, that's currently in the lighthouse specific plan.
Oh.
But we are, uh, the resolution and the exhibit uh eliminates that because it's, it's a subjective standard.
It's inherently subjective.
Oh, okay. So I'm sorry, I was misrepresenting you. So really, you're, you're suggesting this, this revised um or this, this checklist would um uh, not, uh, uh, we just wouldn't even address uh, view sharing at all.
Right.
Okay.
The, the tree, the um, second discussion item about trees, that's, that is included in the exhibit as a standard.
Fernando, is what we are making a motion on attached exhibits A and B, one for Alvarado and one for Lighthouse. Or the, is that, are those the two exhibits that we're making a motion on?
You're making a motion on the resolution plus the exhibits, cause the resolution contains all of the other specific plan amendments that don't include the objective standards. So in the body of the resolution, you have the addition of massage establishments, utility ma- uh, water wells as utility major uses, maker space. utility ma- uh, water wells as utility major uses, maker space, uh, cleanup of the visitor accommodation facility requirements. And I feel like I'm forgetting another one.
No, it's all written.
But those are in the body.
Um, well. I give the world.
Yeah.
All right. I move to recommend a resolution to the city council. Establishing objective design standards for the downtown and Lighthouse specific plans and amending the plans to clarify visitor accommodation facility district requirements, adding massage establishment requirements and definition. Parenthesis prohibiting, uh, businesses prohibiting a massage establishments for businesses facing Lighthouse Avenue as well as Alvarado Street. Adding fence and wall requirements, and Jennifer, this is just in the agenda line, okay. Adding maker space use classification and definition, clarifying residential minor and major, adding new subdivision minimum lot size width requirements, up, updating streetscape lighting requirements, amending the utility major definition to include water facilities as presented in the amended exhibit A and exhibit B, Alvarado Street specific plan and Lighthouse specific plan. Is that right?
Well, it's downtown.
Downtown specific plan and Lighthouse specific.
I think that's good.
All second up.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a sentence of further discussion.
Just wanted to be sure that the documents that we're relying on that talk about these various things are the ones that I mentioned, exhibit A and exhibit B.
And the resolution.
And the resolution. Okay.
Okay. Taking a stab at, very nice. Any other discussion? Okay, can we have a vote on this?
Yes, that's my job. Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Oh wait, I did not catch who was the second chair.
Bob.
Thank you.
His first second of his ninety-first year career.
Perfect. Okay, and Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Fletcher Bluth.
Yes.
Fletcher Brassfield.
Yeah.
Fletcher Dawson.
Yes.
Fletcher Freeman.
Yes.
Fletcher Latassa.
Yes.
You, this motion carries and it is not appealable because it is already going to the planning commission, I mean, to the council.
You know, I want to say to follow up, to thank Fernanda and Terry and Dan doing all the legwork in reviewing the plans in detail through three meetings, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, bringing a document that can be used at least in the near future until, until a first amendment.
Yeah, that's how I, that's how I sleep at night now is like knowing that, yeah, well, if something's wrong with this, we'll just revisit it and take care of it.
Yep. That's all we can do.
What planning commission's gonna be doing.
Become slaves to Sacramento.
Okay, uh, Kim, I have a couple of questions. We need to, uh, oh, acknowledge who our vice chair is going to be.
So I need to bring that rotation.
Okay.
Um, I think it's Commissioner Dawson, if he's interested. So I need to see who rotates in next, cause it's a rotation, but I may be wrong. I need to go look at the list. I look at Terry every time I get something wrong with the commissioner rotation. I know you did, and I'm sorry.
When we were with Fernanda, um, a couple of weeks ago, we looked at it and it seems like Mike is the next person.
Yeah, so, um, I need to
The other Mike, I'm sorry.
This, this Mike.
Mike D.
So I need to bring that forth, um, probably at your next meeting.
Okay.
And, and just have it formally acknowledged.
Okay.
And then hopefully we'll get, I haven't heard any news about, I think they're advertising right now for another commissioner. So that'll be welcome as well. Just have a full compliment.
Well, hopefully that'll go a little faster than it did last time since everybody's been elected and in place and, and whatnot. Um, okay, so, let's see, uh, commissioner comments?
Uh, first of all, I would, after attending that last conference, I would encourage any current and new commissioners to attend. I found it refreshing. I found it informative. And answer some of the questions that are back there that we want to know. We don't have to try to get it from our staff because we're getting it from the source, the state of California in many cases. I would encourage that, and it's
So it was held at a hotel in Santa, or in, uh, Pal, um.
San Luis Obispo. I would stay in a hotel about ten blocks from the place, small community center where we actually had the, but they bought lunch there. The hotel gave me breakfast, so it, it went well.
Two days.
Half a mile, you say.
About that half a mile.
Two days?
Uh, one day.
Oh, one day, okay.
So it just went down the night before and, and barked down the block.
Uh-huh. Well attended.
Yes, we had, we had a, a city attorney. We had a city council person. We had the a former legislator who voted for the, uh, ADUs, and she's no longer in office. She said that they took, um, wrote petitions to remove her, but she just went through the term. But, uh, so it was well attended and well versed, a lot of good discussion. Uh, I didn't like the person getting up and said, I, I'm gonna use the carrot and the stick and we're not afraid to use the stick. I didn't appreciate that kind of talk, but I told her so. But, uh, please consider it whenever Kim can come up with these things. She says she's got the funds to send us, so. About time that we, yeah, it's, we're no longer in COVID, so we can mingle. I wore a mask, but still.
Um, thanks for going. Uh, that's, that's
Kim, when we get the new commissioner, can we get an updated phone list? Thank you. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, okay, informational reports and staff comments?
Um, so this week we'll be releasing our, um, survey on, um, the housing. Um, and it's really sort of fun. We were playing with it today. There's a couple of options. You can do the five-minute survey and there's some areas defined, units, and, you know, you want in those areas. If you want to do the, the more extended survey, you can add on the layers that show sea level rise and fire zones and, and, um, you can look, pull up existing land uses, um, and it starts getting into, um, more detail on the lots that are riper for redevelopment based on percentage development and land values. But if you only have five minutes, you can say, you know, we generally think they all should go here, or maybe in these three areas. So there's a couple of different options and there will be a postcard going out to, um, all residents, um, and that hopefully will be mailed either tomorrow or Thursday. Um, so we're really spending a lot of time on the, I mean, a lot of our staff time is, has to be moved towards the general plan update that has to get adopted by the end of the calendar year. We have a lot of work to do, but we've been doing, as you heard, the council wants lots of public outreach. Um, oh, and the exciting thing, they figured out on the survey through Google Translate, the Spanish version is being checked by, um, a formal translator, but the Google Translate will do it in like eight languages. So you could choose, um, another language. And so I thought that was a, a nifty aspect too, cause I think one of our council members mentioned, or somebody mentioned that they, they thought it, obviously we were always gonna do it in English and Spanish, but multiple languages, which I hadn't really thought of before, and so, um, you can pick Hindi if you want to do that and it'll possibly translate to that, so that'll be fun.
They didn't even use to speak English in this community.
Yeah.
And it started, what about, um, so the, um, what about the, the coastal, um, plan?
Yeah, so let me give you an update where other things are. Um, the ADU ordinance will be on March seventh in front of city council, and that was the one that you passed a couple of months ago. But we have to override a decision of the Airport Land Use Commission, so the council on March seventh will decide whether or not to pass the resolution. We then have to send that resolution to, um, the Airport Land Use Commission and Division of Aeronautics of Caltrans for a forty-five day review period, and then the council can take action. So that's where ADUs are. You know where SB thirty-five is. We'll put it on the next available agenda. Um, so those were two of the bigger planning items, um, and then, um, we're working on the general plan and Christie Sabdo is working, we basically have a draft of the land use plan for the coastal plan done. And then we're, we need to now take all the implementation plan, which are all the zoning regulations and correspond them to specific policies. That's still a lot of work to do.
Is the coastal plan update taking a backseat now to these?
To the general plan and all the housing laws? We are making progress, it's just.
What, what do you expect the timing on that coastal plan? Is, by the end of the year or something, or?
I really don't know. I mean, I would like to say that. We have to get the housing, safety and land use elements done by the end of the year. So that's gonna be the predominant focus, and then any extra time, um, for that planner will go to, um, the other issue.
And you're hiring some new people.
We're hoping. So, um, we have a planning manager position out right now, which is Elizabeth Carickers' position that we eliminated during COVID. So that was funded. We had a failed recruitment the first round. Um, I did offer the job to one person, but and they didn't end up leaving their previous employment, um, so we have it out again, and that ends.
I think that person, the reason they didn't take it was because of the, they didn't like the parking here.
And then Grant Leonard left. January sixth, though, I'm
Where'd he go?
He went to the city of Salinas. He's working as a planning manager, so he's doing, um, working more on advanced planning versus housing. Um, so I think he was interested in not so much current planning, um, but broadening his resume, so that's exciting for him. And so we'll, um, we're down a very significant position in our housing office.
Yeah.
So.
That's a, that's a huge position. That's really, um, that's what Rick Marvin used to do, that's that is a tricky, uh, eventual work they do.
So, um, looking forward to both those positions being filled hopefully by the end of the, or the start of the new fiscal year, I would hope.
Yeah, and Steve Millich up and left.
Did.
I got the feeling, I, I mean, I don't know if this is okay, but you know, that he didn't want to come back into in-person meetings for health reasons. That's something like that.
I don't know, but he, he really appreciated his time on the commission and had a lot of nice words to say.
He was great. So valuable to have somebody like that who had, uh, city attorney kind of practical experience.
I think he just reached his limit for whatever reason. We didn't really talk about that. I get it.
I, I can't be here.
No, no, you haven't reached yours.
Now, the way they poach around here, but the, um, I, I can't be here the next meeting.
Okay.
Anything else of which?
I just wanted to comment that one of the things we were told with that painting was that CalFire is coming down with pretty restrictive uses on, in fire zone. I don't know how it's gonna affect our periphery and our forest, but it was interesting. They said it would be coming out pretty soon.
Yeah, it's in our safety element. It's gonna be, it has to be reviewed by CalFire now.
Okay, you mean adjourned.
Thank you. See you later, Mike.
See ya.
Bye, Mike.